Common Council Meeting, this is our regular meeting for Tuesday, May 25th of 2021. I'll call the meeting to order and roll call. Everyone, please sign in. And Mrs. Spiros is joining us via Zoom. Mr. Butke and Mr. Henler are absent this evening. And please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item C is public comment, period. At this time, the Council President will recognize members of the public who have indicated a desire to address the council. Upon recognition by the Council President, persons may address the council first stating their name and address. The council may act on emergency matters introduced by members of the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak? Go ahead.
I'm Bill Senholz, 111 Swallow Tail, Marshfield. I'm the head of the Economic Development Board, and I'm also the CEO of Forward Bank. I'm speaking in support of the city subdivision. The Economic Development Board has done two housing studies along the way. Both of the studies showed a significant need for single-family housing. No new subdivisions have been done for quite a while, and really, there's no subdivisions available for contractors who want to build one or two houses. Inventory of lots is critically low at this point. There's no large developers that can step in and be large enough to do a subdivision similar to the one that we're looking at right now. There is, it's not really economical for a small contractor to be able to have the equity to put into a subdivision of this magnitude. So really, that really leaves the city as the primary opportunity for development of new lots in the city. At the bank, we try to attract new people to town all the time. We do run into problems attracting people because simply there is a lack of housing available for the people who would be moving into town. The businesses that our customers of ours are running into the same problem at a very significant rate. What we're seeing right now is new businesses, and as businesses are trying to hire new people to move into town, the individuals who would be their employees come to town, don't find housing available. So if they do end up taking the position, which many of them don't because of that reason, if they do take the position, they're living outside in some of the municipalities, usually off to our east. And what happens then is after a year or two of driving an hour to work, they get tired and they quit, and then the employer has to start over from scratch. If they, if they do stick it out along the way, what we end up losing from an economic development standpoint is the money that they spend. When they go home at night, they spend their money at the grocery store in the town that they're in, not in the grocery store in this town. They spend their money in the restaurants that are in the other towns. So we really do need a new source of lots for people to build new homes in the city and would really like to see this subdivision moving forward. Thank you.
Are there any other citizens who wish to comment? Please.
Hello, my name is Trace Stubeal, and I represent Marshfield Clinic Health System tonight. Our address is 1000 North Oak Avenue, Marshfield. So I'm also here in support of the subdivision that you guys are proposed to have in Marshfield. Some of the stuff we're struggling with from a standpoint of recruitment efforts to the Marshfield area is finding housing. So again, same things, we can't find houses, which sometimes deters our candidates from not wanting to move to this area. We have seen significant recruitment over the last few years, so I just wanted to give you some stats so you can kind of understand, you know, the dilemma we're in. In 2019, we onboarded 57 physicians and APCs just to the Marshfield region alone. In 2020, which I'm going to say this, it's 15 months because we changed our fiscal year, was 71. So over a 15-month period, we onboarded 71. That means they hired, they started in that year and came to this community, or within a certain range of this community. In 2020 already, so we're less than five months in, we've already hired 50 physicians and APCs to start at Marshall Clinic Health System in Marshfield Region alone. From 19 to 20, when I factor in the fiscal year change, so it's apples to apples with the full year, we had a 20% increase of successful recruitment to this, this region. And to have that and to maintain that, I can echo that, that we're having people rent sometimes for their first couple of years. So our physicians are on usually a guarantee for the first two years to build their practice, and then they become Class A members. And a lot of times, they'll rent for those first two years just to make sure it's a good fit for them before they buy a house. So that's why I'm giving you the stats from 19 to now. It's we have all these people that we've hired over the last couple of years that if they've been renting, now they're, they're wanting to buy and really put their, their foot in the ground here in Marshfield, and we're really struggling to find housing for them. We work with a whole group of realtors in the Marshfield region, and I think they could all echo that we really struggle to find housing for our providers. One of the other things I wanted to talk about is just the cost of housing. I know there's been some talk about the cost of housing that you're looking to put up in this new subdivision, you know, between the $350,000 to $400,000. The average salary is for us, the lowest range of a physician's salary is in the upper $200,000. So that's the lowest. So you guys can kind of, you know, the span goes way higher than that depending on the specialist, you know, the types of neurosurgeons and the specialists we have here in Marshfield. I just want to give you an idea of what the lowest salary is. So that can support a house in that range of 350,000 to 400,000 easily. And to be honest, I think that's the ideal housing market for our physicians and some of our staff. We have really trained specialists here that aren't physicians, but they also make a really good salary. So we're, we're really looking to have that help us recruit people to this area by having those housing efforts for us, because they have call requirements most of the time, so they can't go the 30 or the 60 minutes away. It means we just lose that recruit. From a staffing standpoint too, you know, like I said, I talked about physicians and APCs, but from a staffing standpoint, in 2019, we hired 472 new people to the Marshfield region. Those are new, those aren't transfers to new jobs within, those are actually new people coming to this market. In 2020, we had 483, and already in 2021, in five months, we've hired 277 new staff members, new people to this Marshall campus. So I think that speaks volumes to the, the people we're bringing to the town, but we really need that support to be able to, you know, provide housing and restaurants. A lake would be wonderful, I don't know if I have that much persuasion power, but, you know, if you have room for that, but just that recreation, those are the questions we get asked all the time, what's there to do in the community? And we're, we work really hard to build relationships with realtors and other community members so that we know the good things that are happening in the Marshall area, so we can sell that too, because we know that when they're spending money at the grocery store and using the banks in town, that helps the, the entire city of Marshfield too. And then just to give you one more perspective, because I'm a big picture person, so I like to break it down a little bit. When we look at the trend of increase, I gave you guys big numbers for physicians and APCs, but if we look at per month, we've gone in 2019 and, or yeah, 2019 and 2020, we hired about 4.75 people per month. In 2020 already, we've already hired 10 per month in five months. So that just tells you the trajectory we're going with successful recruitment. There's some silver linings in COVID, you know, there's a lot of bad things, but there was a lot of good things. And to be honest, Central Wisconsin doesn't look so bad to candidates anymore. So we're hiring physicians that we maybe had posted for two to six to eight years that we were having a hard time recruiting these high-end specialists to Central Wisconsin because we were losing them to New York, LA, Chicago, Milwaukee. And now we're getting, people were calling us, and our recruitment has been crazy busy the last 13 months because now Central Wisconsin looks pretty good to raise a family, the lower COVID numbers, not big cities, people aren't congregated as much. So we really need your guys' support to help us be successful in bringing those people in, to take care of our families and our communities. So if I can't get the lake, we'd love the housing, we would also love a really high-end restaurant, or something maybe with ethnicity. I don't know if it's food trucks coming to town, and you know, we would love to help you guys, you know, promote that too, because we have a lot of staff members on that campus, and a lot of times, they're leaving to eat. You know, the cafeteria is great, but it gets old. Subway's great within our hospital, but again, that gets old. So you know, having those opportunities, we'd love to support you guys as a community as well. But I know when we bring candidates, we like to have dinner with them, because that's when you get to really know somebody and kind of sell them on our reputation, and it's hard when you don't have good restaurants to do that. I think the Rivers has a hard time keeping the chef. You know, there's different things we've been creative about, but I think to help with that, we would love to support or partner with you guys to look at opportunities for that as well. So, any questions or?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other citizen comments?
I wrote it down this time, so I stay on track. Good evening, my name is Ashley Frederick. I co-own Next Home Hub City at 216 East Uppam and Wassa Homes Marshfield at 331 South Central. I first want to thank you for listening to my input two weeks ago and for the opportunity to speak again this evening. I was rather surprised how many people reached out to me after the last council meeting to thank me and tell me how excited they were about the opportunities that it could bring to Marshfield. So thank you to those who reached out. I would like to highlight one email that I received, which stated, "I just wanted to reach out and thank you for speaking at the council meeting last night about the city subdivision. Your points were all spot on. This has been the hardest house hunt we have ever experienced. I think one area to also folk on, focus on are other families like my own where one person will work remotely, so having access to a fully improved lot with wired, high-speed internet connections will be key. I think the ability to work remotely will open Marshfield to more people. I thought it was a good point to bring up since it wasn't touched on much last time. Many of our higher-end homes are outside of city limits and have deterred some buyers because of the lack of internet speeds. So this is just another advantage to having, to be able to build within city limits. I reluctantly played back the meeting last week, I did skip myself, but there were a few things that I wanted to address. Mr. Wagner, you commented on the urgency the realtors are stating, and that it's a near panic. I come to you not only as a realtor, but as the co-owner of two construction companies and a rental branch. I'm an educated businesswoman, and I'm fully vested in our community. I would not stand, stand up here speaking to you if I didn't think that this was something that was feasible. I think the one thing to remember is that this isn't anything that's new, that's something that has been discussed for numerous years as far as different things, but never came to fruition. I feel that now we're at a point where if we don't do something, I think that the growth of our vibrant town can start to trend downward. The urgency comes more so, and the timing is right. We have historically low interest rates, people that saved money during COVID, and people that are relocating to the Marshfield area where, from other areas where housing was more expensive. I know, Mr. Whittle, you said that these numbers were surprising to you, and I would completely understand that if you weren't in the real estate business or the construction company or lending. But to be honest, these numbers are more of the norm. Along those lines, Mr. Wagner, you commented about financing pieces. I work with our local lenders on a regular basis, and they work very diligently to make sure buyers are fitting into the appropriate criteria to be able to afford these homes. In speaking with a handful of lenders over the last two weeks, many stated they each have between 15 to 20 buyers at $350,000 plus just waiting for the market to open. There was a fair amount of discussion about having the private sector involved. I do understand these points, but I think it's getting tougher here in the Marshfield when a non-developer controls the land. Mr. Whittle, you did bring up a couple of lots that I wanted to touch on. The three parcels on 8th Street were actually purchased by a local business owner, not a builder or a developer, and they are now sitting undeveloped. Green Acres was also mentioned, which is an area that is owned by a contractor developer, and those lots are builder-restrictive, meaning that only that builder can build there, which sometimes can slow the process. I know that Peachtree was also mentioned. This too was originally taken on privately, but went through a foreclosure and sold at a discount after the infrastructure was put in. It worked in the new developer's favor that all he had to do was put houses on the already developed lots. I think the key to having this be successful is to having the city involved. As far as the private sector being involved, I think this is where the lot sales come into play. I know that Tom mentioned cookie-cutter-style building to move quickly, but I do not find these to be as desirable. Instead, I like the idea that Josh has proposed to split amongst builders that are hired by clients, that get them done in a timely manner, yet look a little different. Wouldn't it be great to keep all of our local builders and subcontractors busy, which then they could spend their money here? If we take the average lot cost of $45,000 and spread that amongst 23 lots, that's just over $1 million the private sector is spending towards the lots. I also note there is a debate of what affordable housing is, and let's be honest, what might be affordable to me or you may not be affordable to the person sitting next to you. But if we have people interested in putting their roots in Marshfield, why not encourage them to stay in city limits? I would also like to circle back to the opening the middle market. If we are concerned about affordable housing, one way to do this is to let the people in the middle market move to the higher end and open up the middle market, and this can even trickle down to a lower price point. I'm a firm believer that one must take risks in order to reap the rewards. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other of the comments?
Do you have a stool for me? I actually, my name is Erin Howard, I live at 402 West Park Street. I was not planning on speaking tonight, I'm here on support of what Nikki is going to talk about and, and later on today, but I feel compelled to speak after hearing Ashley and Bill because I feel very passionate about what they were talking about. As a property owner and someone who moved here 14 years ago to raise a family, you know, my husband and I were looking at where to move, and we're considering Wassa, Stevens Point, Marshfield, and staying in Rapids. And we chose here because I, Chris and I felt a passion that this city offered. We saw potential, we saw what it already offered, but we also saw what it could offer. And as a property owner and someone who develops and works with businesses and recruits people from out of town, and also renting to travelers who work for the clinic, I could attest to what you had said earlier about there are people who are looking for a place to stay. And if you think about it, when you got the clinic, you got prevention genetics, you got rail, those are jobs that you can really go anywhere in the US. So, not to be blunt, but they're not just choosing that employer, they're choosing a place to raise their family. And if we can't offer them a place to stay, we're, we're basically pushing them away. And what a good problem to have. I mean, if we have all these people wanting to come here to work and live and play, but we can't offer them the place to stay, our population will continue to stay at 18,000 for another 10, 15 years. And I personally don't want to see that, and everyone here does not want to see that. And I agree with Ashley, you need to be, you need to be willing to take chances, and that's so hard for people, especially in Marshall, for whatever reason. My husband always says sometimes Marshall has a self-esteem issue. You know, those who have lived here a long time don't feel that the potential's there, unless those who are really in the thick of it and they're involved, they see the potential, they see the effort, and they are willing to take on those chances. And I can attest, when I was working with the Plaza with Bill Seinholtz and, and Matt, I was up here years ago explaining to council and to the community members, you gotta take a chance, because if you don't, you'll never know what you're missing out on. And now, no one complains about that Plaza. And so it's, you gotta be willing to take a chance. And, you know, I, I just, I feel very passionate about it, just like everyone else, and I just would feel really bad if I didn't say anything to you guys tonight, so I'm in full support of it. And I think that we would not have an issue with people wanting to buy those lots and to, to come here. And, you know, you had mentioned high-end restaurants, and you meant, you know, I would like to see nightlife. It's not that people don't have those ideas, it's because people aren't willing to come here if they don't feel that they have a place to stay and to live. So it's not that people can't come up with, ooh, why not have a rooftop restaurant, or why not have eight to nine o'clock people walking downtown with lights and music? We've thought of that, but we need to get people on board and willing to take chances, and we need to provide a place for them to stay. So it, it all trickles together. So, that's all I need to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more citizen comments? Any more? Third time, see none, we'll move on to item D, approval of the minutes for the May 11th, 2021 regular meeting, and the May 13th, 2021 CIP meeting, we'll be voting on the, your, what do you call that, device, and Mrs. Spiros will be joining us. We have a motion to approve the minutes. Oh, motion by Mr. Fire, second by Mr. Fisher. Any comments? All in favor, vote?
Yes.
And that motion carries unanimously. Next item, item E is staff updates. A Van de Hay Waters project report from Justin Casper, Summit Parks and Recreation Director, Justin.
Thank you, and good evening at your spot. I put some pictures of the pool project, from pictures from today. Just want to give an update on where we're at, and then hopefully we will be very shortly. The pool company is setting up pool lighting junction boxes, junction boxes around the site, putting the pumps in the, in the mechanical room. Plumbing fixtures are getting caulked by PGA. Site concrete work is being done, that's flat work, like the sidewalks, pool deck, the street aprons. The foundation for the monument sign that's going to go on Central was being poured today, hopefully they got that in before the rains opened up and flooded it. Gutters on the building were installed last week. If you probably haven't drove by in a while, the pool slides are up, they're finishing the canopy above that today. The fence around the building and around the facility are going up right now. Site grading is constantly going on, and then the sun, sun shades are being delivered this week. We'll be installing the driveway entrances off of Rottis later on. In your pictures that you have in front of you, you can see the pool vessels themselves, and that top one, you can see there's the gutters which were delivered over the weekend, which we've been waiting on, about a two-week delay on those gutters, which kind of slowed us up. You'll see the family pavilion being installed, that should be done this week, and ceramic towel will start to be installed. Any questions for me?
A lot of, a lot of improvement since I was down there about a month ago.
Yes, it'll start to take shape real quick. So the plan is still mid-July to do an opening. As soon as we get a little closer, we'll make a formal announcement.
Anyone else have any comments or questions for Justin? Mr. Barg has some updates.
Thank you, just two quick notes. Going back to the speaker, who made some great comments earlier, it's not a pond, but it is a nice amenity. We're so excited about the Aquatic Center, and we, we look forward to getting a lot of use here when it opens. Couple of real quick notes, first of all, the, the Job Center has been open only on an appointment basis here for a while, that's been the case with most job centers across the state. So I got a note from North Central Wisconsin Workforce Development Board that as of June 1st, the Marshall Job Center, which is located in the Second Street Community Center, will be open, normal business hours, three days a week without appointments being required. So that's good news for people who are job seekers, that we'll be back to, to pre-COVID times in terms of their availability. The other thing I just want to mention, and it's interesting having folks here from MAPS tonight, because they'll be talking about some other issues, but it was brought up at the last Finance Budget Personnel Committee meeting by Councilmember Whittle, a really good question about whether or not we could do multi-year pet licenses. Did some checking, and, and that would run afoul of state law, so unfortunately, as good an idea as it was, it's not something we're going to be able to pursue. Just wanted to give those two updates tonight.
Okay, thank you. Item F is Council President's comments. We have an employee recognition for Brian Gabel from the Street Department, who has been here for 10 years. Congratulations to Brian. That's the only comments I have. Item G is council comments. Any council comments? Mr. Fire?
Yes, I would like to speak in behalf of the veterans community and the families that acquired a banner on Central Avenue. We want to thank the gentlemen that operated all the lift trucks, they volunteered their morning help on Saturday morning to put the 60 banners up. So on behalf of the Veterans Council and the American Legion of VFW, we thank those employees and the use of the equipment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments? See none, we'll move on to item H, reports from commissions, boards, and committees. Any reports? See none. Move on to the consent agenda. That's before you, a motion to approve. A motion from Mr. Fisher, and a second from Mr. Wagner. Are any comments or questions? See none, all those in favor, please vote.
Yes.
And that motion carries unanimously. There were no items removed from the consent agenda, so we'll move to item K, a presentation on the annual stormwater report, presented by Tom Turchi, City Engineer, Tom.
All right. Per the requirements of our MS4, which is our municipal separate stormwater sewer system, we're required to give an annual report on the stormwater management and stormwater program in the city of Marshfield. To start with, we'll give you some terminologies, because I'll use some of the abbreviations through the presentation. The first one being total suspended solids, or TSS, which are solids in the water that can be trapped by a filter. TSS can include a wide variety of materials, such as decaying plant and animal matter, silt and sand, industrial waste, sewage, and high concentrations of suspended solids can cause problems and health issues downstream and for aquatic life. The second is phosphorus, which is an essential nutrient to a plant, animal, and humans. In water, it exists primarily as orthophosphate phosphate, or in, or inorganic compounds. The parameter that we use is total phosphorus, and that is designated by TP, and defines the sum of all phosphorus compounds that occur in various forms. And the next one is a total maximum daily load. It's a regulatory term used by the US Clean Water Act describing the value of the maximum amount of a pollutant that a body of water can receive while still meeting the quality water standards. And stormwater management is a specialized area of field environmental engineering, emerged in the later 20th century, and practitioners have used this term, best management practice, or BMP, to describe both structural and our engineered-controlled devices to remove pollutants such as retention ponds, or separators, or other methods to get pollutants removed from stormwater. So in the city of Marshville, this is a map of the city of Marshville, we're in three different watersheds, but all within the Wisconsin River watershed. We have to the west side of the city, we are in the Upper Yellow River watershed. On the north side, we are in the Lower Plain watershed. And on the south side of the city, we're in the Mill Creek watershed.
we thank those employees and the use of the equipment. Thank you.
Thank you, any other council comments? See none, we'll move on to item H, reports from commissions, boards, and committees. Any reports? See none. Move on to the consent agenda. That's before you. Need a motion to approve. A motion from Mr. Fisher, and a second from Mr. Wagner. Are any comments or questions? See none, all those in favor, please vote.
Yes.
And that motion carries unanimously. There were no items removed from the consent agenda, so we'll move to item K, a presentation on the annual stormwater report, presented by Tom Turchi, City Engineer, Tom.
All right. Per the requirements of our MS4, which is our municipal separate stormwater sewer system, we're required to give an annual report on the stormwater management and stormwater program in the city of Marshville. To start with, we'll give you some terminologies, because I'll use some of the abbreviations through the presentation. The first one being total suspended solids, or TSS, which are solids in the water that can be trapped by a filter. TSS can include a wide variety of materials, such as decaying plant and animal matter, silt and sand, industrial waste, sewage, and high concentrations of suspended solids can cause problems and health issues downstream and for aquatic life. The second is phosphorus, which is an essential nutrient to a plant, animal, and humans. In water, it exists primarily as orthophosphate or inorganic compounds. The parameter that we use is total phosphorus, and that is designated by TP, and defines the sum of all phosphorus compounds that occur in various forms. And the next one is a total maximum daily load. It's a regulatory term used by the U.S. Clean Water Act describing the value of the maximum amount of a pollutant that a body of water can receive while still meeting the quality water standards. And stormwater management is a specialized area of field environmental engineering, emerged in the later 20th century. And practitioners have used this term, best management practice, or BMP, to describe both structural and our engineered controlled devices to remove pollutants, such as retention ponds, or separators, or other methods to get pollutants removed from stormwater. So in the city of Marshville, this is a map of the city of Marshville. We're in three different watersheds, but all within the Wisconsin River watershed. We have to the west side of the city, we are in the Upper Yellow River watershed. On the north side, we are in the Lower Oplain watershed. And on the south side of the city, we're in the Mill Creek watershed. This is some information from our 2014 stormwater report. We are currently removing 32.4% of the TSS that we produce. And the big number that we determined at this point was that we're currently removing 31.9% of the total phosphorus, or TP. And this is some of the ways that we are removing that, using detention basins, like the Walnut Basin that we have in the right-hand or left-hand corner. We converted that from a dry basin to a wet basin, and that allows solids to settle out, which helps reduce the amount of phosphorus and total suspended solids in our stormwater system. We are a part of North Central Wisconsin Stormwater Coalition, with the cities of Baraboo, Marshville, Merrill, Mozzanee, Schofield, Stevens Point, Wausau, and Wisconsin Rapids, and the villages of Croninweather, Rothschild, and Weston, and the town of Rib Mountain, work together to provide our educational materials and look at items that are related to stormwater management as a group. This year was quite an unusual year, as COVID limited the number of inspections, and many of the other educational tasks completed by our group were placed on hold by all communities within the coalition. We constructed two rain gardens where we partially funded them through funds from the North Central Stormwater Coalition. There was a Prairie River Middle School in Merrill, and Dopkey Park, town of Rib Mountain. We also showed the Rubber Ducky commercial on WAOW and WSAW near Earth Day in 2020, and we'll be doing that again here in 2021. North Central Wisconsin Stormwater Coalition also cosponsored in conjunction with the Marshfield Area Groundwater Guardians to provide educational materials for the water table display located at the Marshfield Zoo. When we talk about pollutant loadings or total maximum daily loads, what we're looking at are some of the quality standards that are located in the Wisconsin River Basin, and some of the lakes and streams and tributaries along that. These photos that are in this drawing are actually from Castle Rock and Petonwell. And it gets, there's enough phosphorus in those bodies of water that they actually recommend that you don't swim or let animals swim in the lakes and rivers at certain times of the year. So the total maximum daily load that we are under is for phosphorus. The Wisconsin River TMDL covers 9,156 square miles and 15% of the state. The point sources, like MS4s, which are the municipal stormwater permities, make up 14% of the overall watershed. So in order to make water quality improvements in the Wisconsin River watershed, it will be more necessary to take and address more than just the municipalities to fix the problem. The central, these photos here are basically the central section of the Wisconsin River Water Basin. And here, we're located in this portion right here, and the upper portion of the Wisconsin River Water Basin, where we're right here. So you can see how small we are in comparison to the overall watershed. This is a diagram as part of the Wisconsin River TMDL. These are the reaches that we are responsible for in stormwater management and meeting those TMDL requirements. In the Mill Creek watershed, we are this portion here in that entire watershed, which is about, we're about 6.9% of the overall watershed. And if you notice, the impaired waters up on the top, Mill Creek is not actually labeled as an impaired water until it is six miles downstream of the city of Marshville. In the Yellow River watershed, we are 1.6% of the area that's in there. And you can see in the circled area, this is where we are, right up here. In the Little Oplain watershed, we are 2.2% of the area. We're located right here, and that's a pretty small portion of that watershed. Again, the Wisconsin River TMDL was approved by the EPA in April of 2019. And this year, the city of Marshall is a recipient of an urban non-point source and stormwater grant in the amount of $49,970, a 50-50 cost share, to complete a new stormwater management plan and TMDL analysis for the city of Marshville. And currently, that plan is underway with Strand and Associates, assisting the city of Marshville. The timeline from the EPA's approval, we have five years to begin modeling and planning, and then probably around 15-plus years for implementation to meet those goals. It'll take a wide variety of different practices to meet the TP removal requirements set forth by this TMDL. These will include water quality grading, construction of new best management practices, and other to-be-determined techniques, which will come with an inherent cost to taxpayers. To meet the intensified TMDL reduction standards, the city of Marshall will have to expand a great deal of tax dollars, which will ultimately create a greater financial burden for the city, given our statutory budgeted limits. And this is part of the presentation from the TMDL. And in our various reaches, we have to remove 911 pounds of phosphorus in the Little Oplain watershed, 987 in the Mill Creek watershed, and 842 pounds in the Yellow River watershed. Basically, we're required to move about 1.25 tons of phosphorus from our stormwater release from the city of Marshfield. When you take a look at the amount of total phosphorus that is being released right now under their modeling, we're less than 2% of that. Even if we meet all those requirements, that takes only 2% out of each of those different watersheds. So when you take a look at the cost, the DNR has a range of costs associated with each pound of phosphorus removal. And it ranges between $1,400 per pound to $3,800 per pound. So we're looking at possible potential costs of between $3.8 million and $10.4 million to meet the goals set forth by this TMDL. So as we take a look at the big picture, you know, this is all doom and gloom as we speak about it right now. If you take a look at the, I found a report on the DNR on the upper and lower Wisconsin Rivers watershed. And we're actually making gains at making the river cleaner. Since they started doing point source analysis loading, there's been about an 81% reduction in the upper Wisconsin, and a 67% reduction in phosphorus in the lower portion of the Wisconsin River. So there are things being achieved by the stormwater management that we've been involved with. And we got started into having an MS4, which had to deal with total suspended solids back in 2008. And this year, we're now under the TMDL, so. Are there any questions? Thank you.
I don't see any questions, Tom. Thank you. Next item is item L, request to approve resolution number 2021-38, authorizing the execution of Department of Natural Resources Principal for Given Financial Assistance Agreement, presented by Nick Kam, General Manager of Marshfield Utilities.
Yeah, I'm asking for a little help here.
Sure.
Not sure where the cats came from?
Everyone loves cats, Nick.
Is this one right? Yes. Thank you. So tonight, I come before you asking for approval on resolution 2021-38. As part of that, tonight, I'd like to have a presentation where I'm going to kind of talk a little bit about lead water services, where we were, where we are currently, and where we're going. The utility is regularly testing for contaminants for the Safe Drinking Water Act. Every three years, based on the EPA lead and copper rules, water utilities must test for the concentration levels of water in the water for lead and copper. In 2006, the test results for MU indicated an action level exceedance occurred. And at that time, the DNR required us and approved MU to basically modify our treatment process, implement directional flushing to help address the exceedance. And since 2006 until 2019, we've passed the subsequent tests. Historically, for those tests, sites were selected that had a copper service with lead solder. Then in 2020, the DNR required the sites to be, to change, to be services that only contained lead. After testing late last year, the DNR notified us of a second action level exceedance. Due to this second action level exceedance, we were required to complete additional sampling. We're provide customer notification, including bill inserts that were sent out in December. Each bill since December has included additional notes related to the level of exceedance and the presence of lead potentially in our water. We've also done some press releases and some direct letters to schools and other companies. We also have to complete a corrosion-controlled treatment plan, which looks for ways to optimize and reduce any release of lead into the drinking water. And then finally, any lead service lines that we have must be replaced in 15 years or 7% annually. If, going forward, if we have future tests where we, where the results are below the action level, the DNR allows us to discontinue the sampling and the notifications, and also discontinue the lead service replacement program. So, the lead water services. Lead water service is an issue that can be found across the United States. I think you've probably seen in the news, there's been various infrastructure bills that have been proposed, both at the state and the federal level, where they include provisions for lead service line replacement. The American Rescue Plan Act funds that the cities receive, along with the county and others at the state level, have also included provisions for replacement of lead services. The lead water service inventory varies across the state and across the country, excuse me. Some younger communities may have never installed lead water services, while some have taken proactive measures to remove the lead over the years, and while others find themselves at a point where inventorying and removal is needed. The picture at the right, hopefully you're able to see it, kind of depicts the various parts of a water service. The utility owns the portion located between the water main and the curb box. This is commonly referred to as the utility or public side. And the utility also owns the water meter that's located inside of the home or business. Then the property owner owns the curb box, the valve. It's usually by the sidewalk to help shut the water service off. And then also owns then the remainder of the water service from that curb box to the house. This service, this portion of the service is commonly referred to the private side. Another contributor to lead in drinking water is the plumbing fixtures located inside of the house. As you can imagine, there are homes that have lead piping, but also the fixtures within the house can have lead. And really, up until about five or 10 years ago, you could go down to the hardware store, and you could purchase a faucet that still had leaded brass inside of it. Lead service inventory. Over the last 20 to 30 years, Marshfield Utilities has been tracking and documenting the various attributes associated with our equipment in our mapping and asset management software. It's been a common practice. We can tell you the age of it, the material type, the size, things of that sort. Unfortunately, prior to that, before we were very data eccentric, that information is not available and wasn't tracked for assets that in some cases are over 100 years old. As we saw on the previous drawing, a majority of the infrastructure is located underground, and in most situations, five to seven feet below grade. And this makes determining the material type of water services difficult. During our meter project in the mid-2010s, our staff went into every home and replaced and installed equipment related to the metering. And as part of that visit, they documented the material type of the water service coming into the home for the private side water. Through this process, we were able to document about 250 private side lead services. MU has received grants from the DNR over the last five years to support the private side replacement. MU has and continues to contact these customers regularly with private lead water services to consider replacement and take advantage of these funds. Tonight's resolution request is to support the most recent grant that we've received for up to $616,000. This amount will provide approximately $4,500 towards the replacement of the remaining approximately 130 lead services that are located on the private side. In most cases, this $4,500 will cover the complete cost of replacement. I should note, as we've tried to work with customers, it's been very interesting. Obviously, there were some early adopters, but then there's others that basically indicate that they've lived in the home for 50 years. They've raised a family of five, and everyone's fine and healthy, and they don't see the need to replace it. Obviously, these dollars will hopefully help incentivize them to realize there's no cost to them, and ultimately provides value to their home. You know, we've also worked with a local bank during this process to help provide low interest rates if the cost exceeds the grant amount, to help support those, and also to support payment to the contractor until the funds are received from the state. The resolution tonight will allow the program to continue. It's needed since the DNR will not allow the utility to approve and then also handle the dispersment of the funds. The process right now is the state, after approvals are complete and the replacement is complete, the state will cut a check back to the city, and Ron and his department then will work to issue that refund back to the actual property owner or to the bank, depending on how it was paid for originally. So back in 2009, we started internally exploring ways to complete an inventory of the public side water service material type. And you might be thinking, doesn't the private side material need to match the public side? Unfortunately, this is not the case. Through the years, galvanized water services were very prevalent on the private side, while we installed lead and copper on the public side. And over time, the galvanizers failed. And in many cases, these private water services were replaced with copper. In the fall of 2009 and during 2020, we broke the city into four quadrants, kind of divided by Central and Veterans Parkway, and identified a water service from each quadrant with an install year ranging from 1940 through 1970, so four services per year through that period of time. We then contracted with our own staff and hydrovac contractor to expose the water service in the terrace, the area between the back of curb and the sidewalk, to determine the material type. We also reviewed Public Service Commission of Wisconsin annual reports. We're required every year to submit reports, both for the electric and water utilities and the communication as well. We were able to find that we have reports that go back to 1909. Unfortunately, the actual report didn't have information on lead services. However, whoever was documenting and submitting them decided to handwrite some notes, which provided us some additional information to help us understand or realize what the potential numbers could be. And also, over the years, as our staff has worked in the field, they document and make handwritten notes about the field work that they completed. And these notes reference different items they encountered during repairs, including if they found a leak, or I'm sorry, lead was found while they were doing the service work. All of these resources were used to determine our inventory on the public side. So the results. The results of our investigation and research was a total just over 2,400 out of the possible, of the 8,000 water services may contain lead. About 50% of that total were installed prior to the 1940s. And in those cases, it would be the full length of the service that we talked about on the public side. The other 50% that were installed from about the late 1940s until the late 1960s may contain what's called as a lead goose neck. A lead goose neck is a two-to-three-foot piece that connects the water main to the service. As you likely know, lead is very pliable, so the application makes it very advantageous to connect it to the main and be able to flex it down to wherever the services that runs to the property. The total includes both public and private water services that contain lead. Therefore, a property that has a lead service on both the public and private side remaining would be counted as two in that total that you see. Cost. The cost for the replacement to the utility per service can range from $0 to up to $5,000. The property owner is responsible for replacement of the private water service, and it can use the grant program. So that's where the $0 side comes in. Any public side replacement that doesn't currently have a curb box is required to have one installed per the state plumbing code. As we're doing our replacements, we will install a curb box for the property owner. However, the property owner will ultimately be responsible for that install. And the cost for a curb box is around $200 to $250 per installation. And this is a And this is obviously considerably reduced from what it would cost if the property owner decided to just install a curb box. We're estimating about 1,000 of the services will require a curb box to be installed. Replacement of the public side water service is a few hundred dollars when it's completed as part of a road construction project, since there's no or very limited road repair cost borne by the utility. Some projects allow for the sanitary lateral and the water service to be replaced at the same time. It is common for the water service and sanitary sewer lateral to be found in the same trench. Since many of our lead water services are 80 plus years old, it's likely that the sanitary sewer lateral is of a similar age and could also be replaced to help reduce wastewater, I N I, or inflowing infiltration. Replacing the sanitary lateral and the water service jointly allows for sharing of the cost. Obviously, one of the challenges is there, and I, I know the city works to help with customers, help property owners with those replacements, but ultimately the customer is the owner of that service from the lap, for the waste side. Full replacement requires Marshfield Utilities to bear all the costs, including the road repairs, which make up the largest cost component. Overall, we estimate that the total cost for this project will range somewhere between six and nine million, depending on various factors. Ultimately, the timeline to complete is, is one of the largest ones as well. And how, you know, those that, you know, if every one of us is a part of a road project, obviously that overall cost would come down considerably. But obviously through the timeframe and the constraints that you work through for making road repairs, that's not the case. So probably only a small percentage will be able to take advantage of that situation. Timeframe and rate impact. We explored various replacement schedules, looking at resource needs and financial impact ranging from five, 10, and 15 years. We've worked with the city engineering department, Tom and Dan and others, on the known road replacement schedule, along with road ratings to consider and consideration for future sanitary projects, trying to ensure coordination on replacement, optimize efficiency and obviously project cost. Considering all these factors, staff recommended to the utility commission, and they agreed on an initial 15-year timeline with annual reviews after the first two construction seasons. The goal is of those first two construction seasons is to determine ways to help reduce the timeline by finding additional resources to help expedite the change out. And obviously, the support, as I mentioned earlier, from any local, state, or federal resources may lessen the financial impact to our customers and support a quicker timeframe for replacement. Any infrastructure that the utility installs has an impact on our rates regardless, and we talked about this quite a bit when we did the building project. It doesn't matter if it's debt financed or cash financed. It still impacts our rates the same way and how the PSC does the, our financials. Ultimately, a longer timeline for the project will offer more frequent with less significant rate changes, likely in the single digits. A shorter timeframe could just lead to a larger percentage increases associated with the rate cases. Customer resources. For any customers with questions, we encourage them to start on our website. You can go there now if you like. The URL is listed above. It's our, our home address, themarshfieldutilities.org. Once you're on the website, there's a top bar, a blue bar over on the right, there's a spot that says about us. And from there, you can hit a drop-down menu and select lead service replacement project. The next page will provide customers an easy-to-navigate page with general information, a section on questions, question, customers may have, a link to an interactive map, and email and phone number, contact information. The interactive map will provide customers the ability to select a property, determine the service material type category for that property, a general description that kind of explains, further explains the category, and then a tentative replacement date. We currently have the next three years included in the map. Those properties that you click on that indicate to be determined indicates that we have those properties on our list for replacement. However, at this time, it's at least three years out before it's being replaced. In addition, the website outlined, outlined steps we will complete to work with the property owner to have their water tested. So if a customer wants, they can work through the process, we'll get the water tested and test it twice possibly, and through that can find means to, if we get results that exceed the action level, we'll work with the customer to expedite their replacement. Overall, our focus is on providing safe and reliable drinking water to our customers. You know, the steps we've outlined and the resources available to our customers support that focus. Our goal is to, you know, work to determine ways to accelerate this replacement schedule as much as we can as we gain more experience. You know, I think as far as lead, I know that a lot of people think about Flint, Michigan, the problems they felt there. Obviously, that's not what's going on here. They changed their water source and that led to issues with how lead service lines were in their system. That's not what's going on here. Here, we're, we failed the test, but ultimately we're working to take care of the lead service. And even after we pass the future test, we're going to continue the placement schedule to get the lead out. I've had some of my staff look at, you know, just across the county, and there are a number of communities that have lead in their, their territories or in their systems that they'll have to deal with over time as well. You know, if you have a lead service, I think, you know, there's ways, obviously, it's the consumption of water that has, potentially has lead in is, is something to be conscious of. And, you know, running the faucet, running the water for a few minutes, up to five minutes beforehand will help flush the system. Also, looking for filters for filtration can also be another potential avenue for some, to help address it as well. So, and like I said, the, the website helps with a lot of those resources and I encourage you to start there and then you can reach out to our staff to get more information. So as I started with, I would recommend approval of resolution number 2021-38.
Are there any questions for Nick? We have a motion from Mr. Wagner. I assume that's to approve. And a second from Mr. Fisher. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, please vote. Mrs. Spiros?
Yes.
And that motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Item M, first reading of ordinance number 1457, a request to rezone the property located at 307 East 21st Street, parcel 33-06265, from SR3, single-family residential, to TR6, two-family residential. Presented by Bryce Hembrook, City Planner, Bryce.
Thank you, Council President. So the applicant is requesting to rezone the property from single-family residential SR3 to two-family residential TR6. A public hearing was held at the Plan Commission meeting, the April Plan Commission meeting. However, no decision was made. So we brought that, we brought the request back to the Common Council at the last meeting, and you guys decided to have staff bring back an ordinance for you guys to consider. So, we've kind of gone over the basics of this request, but I'll, I'll kind of briefly go through it. So, when we review requests for the rezon, for rezoning, the first place that staff looks is their comprehensive plan. What does a comprehensive plan recommend? And so, the future land use map in the comprehensive plan says that this property is in the medium-density residential district. This medium-density residential district, the ideal density would be three to 10 units per acre, and the ideal land uses would be single-family, two-family, and townhouses. The proposed density would be approximately seven and a half units per acre for this property if a duplex is constructed, which a duplex is the proposed use. However, there's nothing that ties the developer to building a two-family home. The surrounding neighborhood is also a medium-density residential area. There's single-family homes to the west, to the south, and to the north. There is also a mobile home park to the south beyond those single-family homes. And then there's a mix of single-family homes and two-family homes to the east as well. So according to the future land use map, this would be a suitable location for a two-family residence. And so, city staff recommended approval because it was consistent with the recommendations of the comprehensive plan and also because, as we've been talking about during the, you know, this meeting and the last meeting, the city is low on housing lots. And this would be a good example of using infill development, which utilizes existing infrastructure and keeps costs low for taxpayers. So, the recommendation, there would be no recommendation at this time unless the rules are suspended. Final action would be requested after the second reading, which is scheduled for the first June meeting for Common Council. Thank you.
Any questions for Bryce, Mr. Wagner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bryce, I haven't gone by, I haven't driven by this site. Is that lot vacant now?
Correct.
How big is that lot? Do you have a rough idea?
Just under 12,000 square feet, so about .27 acres.
Okay, and there, okay, you say to the, I guess it would be to the east, there's some TR6s out there. And then there's across the street from that and also a little bit to the east, there are two other TR6s there, and the rest of it is surrounded by SR3. And the Plan Commission, what was the, I know the Plan Commission couldn't come to a consensus on this. Can you give me an idea why they, they decided not to, not to make a decision on this?
So I don't know why there was no final action made, but I do know that they did make a motion to table the item at first because they wanted to see a site plan for the project because there were some concerns from nearby neighbors that some of the duplexes down the street weren't quite up to, you know, their, how they thought the duplexes should look. However, they were reassured that the builder is different than the one that built the homes down the street. So there were some concerns with that. They also cited traffic concerns and concerns that the property value would decrease. So the Plan Commission wanted to know more information. However, we told them that, you know, as far as the site plan goes, we don't traditionally bring a site plan for rezoning because it's not looking at the specific project, it's looking at the specific property and what it should be zoned. So that was, ultimately, they decided to deny the, the motion to table. And then for the final decision, it failed due to a lack of a second. So.
Okay, I'll, before you, before this comes back to us, I'll be looking at the assessor's records and see what the property values are there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Rosendich.
Thank you. I, I sit on that board. I, I can just a little tidbit. There was two new members on there as well. I think they're just very new, trying to hear the process and what we go through. So I think if we table it and bring it back, I think with some more information, it probably would go through. I was on the motion, but it just wouldn't, wouldn't pass. So.
Mr. Whitson.
Thank you. I know you said that by rezoning this, it doesn't commit the builder to putting in a two-family, but I can't help but think that the reason why this is coming before us is because he plans to put in a two-family. So I understand what you're saying, and I know that it doesn't tie his hands, but let's be realistic, it's going to happen. The thing that I have concern about, and I've heard this term used on this council a few times, is this idea of spot zoning. And I'm, I'm looking right now at the GIS viewer on the city website. And yes, there are two other properties. If you take the property in question right now and you go, you skip two houses and go down a little ways, that there are two more properties that are zoned, multifamily. And then across the street and down just a hair, there's a couple more. But that's, looks like, I'm really not sure why this one is split, but it looks essentially like there's four properties out of this entire neighborhood that would then be multifamily. As we heard today, it seems like single-family is the way that people want to go, not multifamily. I'm going to have a hard time, I think, supporting this. This is my district. I do understand the concerns that some of the residents would have in this area. And the fact that it seems to be sort of a spot zoning situation that we've frowned upon as a council in the past makes me lean against this. So I guess I'll wait and see, hear what discussion occurs leading up to this next week, but it doesn't sit well with me.
Could I address the spot zoning? Yeah, so spot zoning is one of those terms that, if you ask, you know, a room full of people what spot zoning is, you'll get a whole bunch of different answers. Traditionally, when I've read up on how Wisconsin, you know, statutes looks at spot zoning, traditionally, it's dependent on what your comprehensive plan says. So in this case, it says medium-density residential. So that's kind of where we, we get our recommendation of. It wouldn't necessarily be spot zoning if it's recommending in the comprehensive plan that it can be for a certain use such as single-family, two-family, townhouse. Now, if you were to, if we were to say they would like to request to a mixed-use district and put, you know, an office in there, that would be probably more in lines with the spot zoning. How, how I've seen the resources that the Wisconsin, the APA, the American Planning Association of Wisconsin, those were kind of the guidelines that they've kind of sent out to us before. So the way that we've kind of looked at spot zoning is, if it's recommended in the comprehensive plan, it's more than likely probably not considered as spot zoning. But there is a lot of uncertainty with that, so. So I just kind of wanted to give background on how we kind of have looked at that in the past.
Any other questions? This will come back on June 9. Item number N, first reading of ordinance number 1456, request to amend chapter 18, section 18 to 72, yard setback adjustments and section 18-73, intrusions into required yards to allow permitted intrusions into required yards for roads that are identified as major streets and to add language to allow skywalks as permitted intrusion into a required yard. Presented by Bryce Hembro.
Thank you. So the Marshfield Clinic Health System is planning on constructing another skywalk. This was part of their campus master plan that they presented, I believe it was in 2019. Ultimately, when they came to us and, you know, they're looking for what kind of approval process was necessary, we looked back at how the existing skywalks were constructed. They were constructed prior to our, our current zoning code. And so there really wasn't much information on how they were viewed from a zoning standpoint. So after talking with the applicant, we recommended that they propose a municipal code amendment in order to propose language to allow the, the skywalk to intrude into the required yard setback and also to add some language that would state that it could, that the intrusions are permitted along major streets. So there are some major streets that are identified throughout the city of Marshfield. They were identified in the 2007 comprehensive plan. And so, for example, Oak Avenue, where the skywalk is being proposed, is considered a major street. In the past, the zoning administrator has kind of had that call of whether or not permitted intrusions can be allowed in major street setbacks. We think that it would be best if it was written in, you know, written in stone that this is considered. In the past, it was pretty much up to the, the specific zoning administrator to make that call. The other change that they're proposing to make is to add that skywalks can go into the setback that is typically required. So generally, if there's a setback of 25 feet, the building would have to go up to that 25-foot and they couldn't go any closer to the right away. In this case, skywalks and all similar enclosed structures and the necessary support structures, so the pylons that would hold the skywalks, those would be able to intrude into the setbacks. However, we would require that they would have to be reviewed by the Board of Public Works and ultimately approved by the Common Council prior to the installation. So overall, staff is supportive of this request and have discussed adding similar regulations like this in the past to clarify whether or not skywalks are permitted. Once again, dependent on the approval from the Board of Public Works and Common Council. This is also the first reading, so there is no recommendation at this time unless the rules are suspended. And then we would recommend to set the second, second reading slash adoption on June 9. Thank you.
Any questions for Bryce on this item? Okay, moving on to item O. A request to approve resolution number 2021-42, authorizing a policy on a one-year trial basis endorsing a program to trap, neuter, and return stray cats within the city of Marshfield. The basis for this request was shared during a presentation at the March 9 council meeting. This will be presented by Bob Larson, ordinance officer, and Caitlin Lowberg and Karen Routh from Marshfield Area Pet Shelter.
Thank you. As you stated at a previous council meeting held on March 9, we brought up concern regarding a cattle population problem that is very prevalent in Marshfield. At that meeting, we presented an option known as TNR, trap, neuter, and return. The process, again, is to trap feral cats, have them spayed or neutered, and then return them to the place that they were originally trapped from. This would be done at a zero cost to the city, and it would eliminate over time an abundance of litters of cats and kittens in the city and also then thus reducing the spending of money for cats that are housed at the Marshfield Area Pet Shelter. With that, I would recommend that we take the resolution that has been drafted by the city attorney and have it accepted and approved. city attorney and have it accepted and approved. That resolution should also be in your bag.
Okay. Any further presentation or just backup for you? For questions?
Bob always needs backup. No, we're primarily here not only because we have another thing on the agenda, but just to impress again how important we feel this is and how much we support it and think it's a good idea.
Okay, are there any questions? Okay, we're looking to her motion to approve, motion by Mr. Varsho, second by Mr. Rosendich. Mr. Whitzel, you have comment.
Thank you. Once this is passed, how quickly would it take place?
So we actually have a plan to start in phases. The first phase being any feral cats that are brought into the shelter get fixed and put back where they're supposed to go. Right now, we're kind of slammed with what we call kitten season. It's that time of year when all of those feral cats or even stray cats are out running around, having lots of babies. Within just the past two weeks, we've had 25 kittens come in and numerous pregnant cats. So we are really busy with that right now, but starting with fixing and returning the ferals that come in will help us determine where the ferals are coming from as well. So that when we start to slow down and have more time to start this project, we'll know where to focus on.
Okay. The concern I have, I agree that there's an issue. I think the problem is not just in the feral cats. I think the problem is also in cat owners who allow their cats to wander about. As a cat owner, I do not, so I'm not in this ballpark, but I think it's really important and I think it may resolve, or I shouldn't say resolve, it should, it may lower the issue slightly if we can get information out. And so I would like to see significant, I don't know if our communications department can get involved with this or how this happens, but I'd like to see some significant efforts put out to let people know that, you know, if Fluffy's running loose, you may find that Fluffy looks a little different next time you see Fluffy. Because Fluffy was trapped, neutered, and ear clipped. So, you know, if people who have cats are concerned with that, maybe that would be a good incentive to then have them on a leash or, or in their house or something along those lines. So the fact that I guess you're starting with submitted animals, that makes me feel slightly better. And then, like I said, I really would like to see a lot of educational information be put out there to the public. The other question I guess I have, since you're saying that it's the feral cats that are being submitted, how do you know that a cat that has been brought to the shelter, how do you know if it's feral or if it's Fluffy?
Yeah, absolutely. So we'll start with that one. Both myself and my coworker Holly here are certified veterinary technicians. Holly's been doing that for numerous years. I've been a vet tech for about six years. And our experience with cats is, it's pretty easy for most, for us to tell most of the cats who is a pet and who is not. There are signs that when you're petting a cat, they show you that they are enjoying the petting and then there are signs that they don't want you to touch them at all. So primarily the cats that we are talking about are the ones that either are hissing and growling and won't let us touch them at all. Those are the kitties that we have to put into a net just to vaccinate them and check them over. So those are the ones that are very obvious that this is not someone's pet. If we have some that come in that seem like they're pretty crazy, we have what we call our feral room, where the cats go into that room for a day or two while they're waiting for their surgery anyway. And if it's a pet cat, usually once they're in a big room and not in this little cage, they'll come forward and rub on us and let us know that they're friendly. But in general, you know, it's, it's pretty easy for us to tell which cats have had human interaction and which cats might belong to someone versus cats that have been living outside for a while and really just don't want to have any interaction with people. In regards to the first topic, info to people, that's absolutely part of our TNR program. We've actually already shot, I think, like six or seven informational videos that we plan to put out on our Facebook page and our website to let people know about TNR. There's also a really awesome service that we're planning on using called Alley Cat Allies, which anyone can go to their website. They have tons of info on there and you can get door hangers so that when you're going around and doing TNR, you can hang it right on the doorknob that's got all the information about what TNR is. We also have resources like OnFocus and WDLB, that this is one of the programs that we'll be starting, so we'll be teaching the public about it as we go. We also teach people about it when they call and talk to us. You know, we had the manager of the Marshfield Mobile Home Park, Nikki DeYoung, call us not that long ago saying, hey, we've got like 100 to 150 cats here and I don't know what to do about it. And as a shelter, we just don't have the capacity to take all of those cats in, so the only thing we can offer her is TNR. So we explained to her what that process was and she was extremely excited about it and can't wait to, you know, get on board to start doing that. So she is also on board, so we're planning on using her to talk to all of her tenants. And she said that they have a newsletter that they send out, so she will be including it in her newsletter. So definitely a big part of TNR is to inform the public what's going on and not necessarily in the dead of night, go steal all these cats, fix them, and put them back without telling anybody. Yeah, I hope that answers your questions.
One more follow-up.
Sure.
As you, as cats come into the shelter, I'm assuming you're waiting for the minimal period of time before you do anything because I believe it's the law that you can't actually provide any care for any pets whatsoever until the waiting period is done? Is that correct?
No, actually, we are allowed to do medications and vaccinations because it is a danger to the animals that belong to us that are in the building. It's actually a precaution to give them the medications.
Because being married to somebody in the field or in the business, she's made it very clear to me that if you have a hit-by-car dog, you can't do anything with the dog. You cannot vaccinate the dog, you cannot do anything with the dog except very minimal emergency care until some waiting period is complete. Because that is somebody's pet potentially. And so by law, I mean, I was even shocked that pets are protected by HIPAA. So I would want to make sure that from a legal perspective, that we as a city are not held responsible if, again, Fluffy comes in, is done, something's done to Fluffy before a waiting period is complete, so that we're not on the hook for violating some law.
Yeah, so I've not heard of that, but I can definitely look into it for sure. All of my research has shown that shelters are allowed to do, basically, the only things that we do right now before the stray hold is up is dewormers and vaccinations and topical flea and tick medication. But if they come in and they're injured, again, Holly and myself being vet techs, we can treat them to make them comfortable. We don't want them sitting there with a broken leg. You know, I'll have to look into that because that, that seems crazy. But being that we just voted to decrease that stray hold to four days, it is still an option that we wait on feral cats until that four-day stray hold is up. But as of right now, we aren't spaying or neutering any animals until after seven days anyway.
Point of clarification, did we vote for the reduction? I didn't think we had yet.
Yeah, that was in the consent agenda.
It was to come to the council, I thought, that we were going to discuss.
No, that's the, that's the contract.
Can I take that for a second? It was on the consent agenda to approve the recommendation made by the Finance Budget Personnel Committee, but in order to make it effective, there would have to be an ordinance approved by this body and the first and second readings would occur in June. So the ordinance will not change and the council will still have a chance to discuss that four-day hold. But what you approved tonight through the consent agenda was the intent to move that initiative forward.
Okay, so we do not have a reduced hold period?
Not until the ordinance is adopted. What you did tonight is show strong inclination to do so.
That was my understanding.
The ordinance will have to be amended in the next two meetings.
So until that happens, we're still on a seven-day hold period?
Correct.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I want to make clear, I want to make clear that the way that this resolution was drafted and kind of the option that I used to put this together with sort of the request by our humane officers, this isn't something, in terms of the trap, neuter, and return, that's not a city operation. We've authorized that it can be done, but that's not, so that, we're not doing that. That's not really our personnel, other than to the extent that, you know, MAPS is supported by the city. But I just want to make clear that that's not part of what we're talking about. When you're, have that concern, we're not really dealing with that on this resolution.
Any other comments? I see none, please vote.
Yes.
That motion passes to count. Seven, seven to one. We're going to go out of order here on your agendas and go to item R, which is a request to approve a new agreement with the Marshfield Area Pet Shelter for services related to impounded animals, presented by Steve Barbour, city administrator.
Thank you, council president. The reason I stepped forward on this one is because of the way it came about. This was also on the Finance Budget Personnel Committee agenda on May 18th, discussed at some length. This would be for a new agreement with MAPS. We currently have an agreement with them that was approved in 2017, four years ago. It has not been updated since then, it hasn't needed to be. It's declared in the agreement that it's effective until any changes would be made. What MAPS is coming forward now is asking for some increases in the fees to reflect the level of service that they provide to the animals that are impounded. So that's how it ended up at Finance, Budget, and Personnel. How it ended up in here outside of consent agenda was because even though the committee, I think, showed some, some support definitely for the proposal for this agreement as put forth by MAPS, there was enough question to where they asked it to be brought forward as a separate agenda item before the entire body. So I will let the MAPS representatives and Bob Larson, if he wishes to make a comment as well, talk about the heart of this proposal. I just wanted you to know how we got here.
Now you guys get to see the cats. So yeah, in your packet, we have the new contract, some information about what our current fees are and our proposed new fees, and then an email from Officer Larson. So while I was making my notes for this meeting, you know, I just had to remind myself how many people do not understand what we do at the Marshfield Area Pet Shelter. So to help illustrate that, you're seeing a lot of the animals that are taken in to our care through the city of Marshfield. A lot of these cats and one dog were from the city of Marshfield in last year. A lot of these were just last year. So to reiterate, in 2015, we actually set our first original fees with the city for cats. And then in 2017, when we took over the dog contract, is when those other fees came into play. So there's actually two things going on there, 2015, 2017. So since that time, back in 2015, we were completely volunteer-based. We did not have any staff at that time and we did the best that we could without any employees. So since 2015, when we took over the first contract for the cats, we hired two vet techs who are here tonight. Because they are vet techs, they provide a lot of the medical that you're seeing in these. Pretty loud. This is one situation where this little kitten was found inside city limits and she had a really big sore on her neck. Holly was called in on her day off on a Saturday to come in and care for this cat and overtime fees were applied to our payroll at that time. So we just want people to understand the kind of care that we give these animals when they come in, just to keep them comfortable. We don't want any animals to suffer while they're with us. So here's another one where she's giving that cat a bath that same day, there was two of them that came in. So a lot of this medical responsibility before MAPS was formed and before we had these two vet techs on staff was the city's responsibility. So our ordinance control officers would have the responsibility of taking these animals to a vet office on their time and at the expense of the city. So to reiterate, these are the things that we are now performing at MAPS, hence why we're asking for an increase in our fees to provide this care for these guys. So again, to explain how it works, for the first seven days, the responsibility of all their medical is on the city. So in the past, like I said, the ordinance officers would have to take these guys to a vet. Now we are on-site, we can take care of the medical needs of these animals without the officers running them to the vet offices. So we can treat things like upper respiratory infection, superficial wounds, injuries, abscesses, just to name a few things. Plus, we medicate these animals during their seven-day stray hold. So in addition to the medical savings to the city, we also field a lot of calls, emails, messages regarding stray and missing pets. Many of these would funnel through dispatch or the ordinance officers. Other services that we provide are, we have our staff posting all the stray animals that come into our facility on our Facebook page in hopes of reuniting these owners, or these pets with their owners sooner, again, saving the city money there. We provide a free microchip with every reclaimed animal, which is an $8 cost to us. We get them home sooner because they're microchipped and the more microchips we get out there, the less cost it is to the city. We assist the officers when they bring us wildlife. Bob has been notorious for it lately. He brings us owls and ducklings while they wait for a transport to one of the wildlife sanctuaries here in Wisconsin. So we help with all of that. We look up microchips, license numbers, rabies tags, and other identifiers when the officers are not on duty. We have recently committed our staff to helping the police department on the weekends to do our own reclaims, being that the ordinance officers are no longer working weekends through Kayla's leave. All of this costs our organization, staff time, in addition to the supplies. We're just asking to recoup some of the costs that are incurred with all of these expenses that we are seeing now that we have increased our higher standards of care for these animals. We feel that our increases are justified, being for the amount of time that we spend with these animals now and that the original fees have not been changed for six years. We have two different contract types that we work with, with municipalities. One is by the day and one is a flat fee. The Village of Spencer has opted for the fee by day, like the city of Marshfield, and so they recently signed this new contract that we're proposing to the city of Marshfield for the increases and the four-day stray hold. Uh-oh. Turn that down. We've seen this already. Thank you. The other townships, we have contracts with McMillan, Richfield, and soon to be Lincoln and Rock, and they have all opted for a flat fee. And that flat fee is $50 per every cat that they bring us and $90 per every dog, which again is on target with what we're asking for the city's new contract. So if you have any questions about this, I'm just going to remind you that any stray animals that are returned to their owners, those fees are reimbursed to the city by those owners, so that money does get reimbursed to the city whenever the stray reclaims are returned to their pet owners. So if Bob wants to speak more on that. That's pretty much it in a nutshell. If somebody comes in, they want to get their animal back, they have to come see us first. They pay the fees for the time that the animal is spent out at MAPS and then we go out there and release the animal to them. There is a thing where if they can't afford it at that time, we will write them a contract so they can at least get the animal out right away and then have an X amount of time to pay us back the fees that they've incurred. Should they choose not to do that, there is other recourse, which is a citation, which just adds a whole lot more money on to their, their fees that they incurred while the animals at MAPS. And then they go through a restitution process through the court to get that money back.
Okay, what we're looking for here is a motion to approve the new agreement with MAPS. A motion by Mr. Rosendich. And also, second by Mr. Varsho. Mr. Whitzel, you have comment.
Thank you. And looking at the contract, there's some issues with the holding day period and the contract, the way it's worded. Three A, 13 days, for up to four days for felines, 23 per day, for up to four days on day five, sole possession ownership of said stray is turned over to MAPS, which isn't yet the case because we don't have the ordinance. Section four, part, part C, a fee scheduled for reclamation of animal by owner past the four-day stray hold period. Again, that needs to be updated, so there's some verbiage that needs to be changed. Additionally, what you're looking to do then is change what we're paying currently of $49 for a cat to $91 for a cat for seven-day hold and $91 for a dog to $161. $49 for a cat to $91 for a cat for a seven-day hold, and $91 for a dog to $161 for a dog for a seven-day hold. Correct?
Correct.
Mr. Barsh?
Yeah, and if I can, just dovetailing on that, that comment by Councilmember Whitso. The, the contract doesn't become effective until July 1 of this year. If in fact it is approved by the council, that would allow time for the ordinance process on the four-day hold to, to go through. So if it all comes together, you know, that will be, that wording that talks about the four-day hold will be correct. If it's not, I guess we'll have to deal with it at that time.
And I took a look at these costs too, after our Finance Budget and Personnel Committee meeting, and dropping the, it seems like it's a large increase, but most of the services that are provided would be provided whether it's a four-day hold or a seven-day hold. The only additional thing on the seven-day hold is you have three more days where the cat food and dog food. So most of these services are already being provided for, even though there's, we're reducing the number of days on a hold. Are there any further questions or comments? Mr. Whitso?
Thank you. Where in the contract does it say July 1 start?
I don't know. But I, I know that the, that was, I apologize, I'm not looking at the contract right now. That was the intent, because, okay. All right. That was my intent, because the previous one was effective in, as of July 1 of 2017. So I assumed that this would be effective as of July 1, 2021, but it doesn't say that. So I guess, was that acceptable?
Sure.
Yeah, I apologize. That, that's acceptable to Karen and the, the MAPS staff. We'll go with that. My, my fault. I thought it was there.
Mr. Wagner?
Yeah, thank you. One of the reasons I, I, oops. Okay, there we go. One of the reasons I had a lot of questions about this during Finance Budget and Personnel was because I, I think that, I think the rate increases are way out of line. We've been, we went up from, well, I remember when the state, the state changed the statutes and said that we were only required to care for the animals for four days and as opposed to seven. This council magnanimously said, look, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna keep it at seven, and we're gonna pay you for all seven days. When you came back to us about these things, you, you talked, you gave us some numbers on what the average stay of a, of a cat or a dog was. As a matter of fact, dogs were reclaimed, runaway dogs reclaimed rather quickly. Cats, just about as quick, two days, something like that, I believe that was?
1.4.
One, very good. Okay, the, the, so what, what's going to happen is you're going to be getting almost the same as the seven days, if stays two days that, that we gave you before. So, you know, I understand that you've increased the services, but you're, you, basically, it's not something that's required of the city for, for, for that to happen. At least, I don't believe it is. So, you know, I'd like, I, I think maybe you deserve an increase. I just don't want it doubled, and that's what I'm concerned about. So maybe, I don't know, if this, if, I, I have no doubt that this is going to go through, but this, but if it doesn't go through, I think we should, there'd be room for talking with you directly to negotiate a different fee. Thank you.
Mrs. Spiros?
Okay, I have a couple of follow-ups. Obviously, like that video just kind of turned my stomach a little bit, and I'm a pet lover, but I have a couple of questions. I just wanted to know again, what happens to the feral cats that you take in? I heard you say, I mean, I know all the care that you give them, but then where do they end up at the end of their stay? I was a little unclear on that. And secondly, I mean, I was a little concerned when you said that one of the mobile home parks had, you know, that the, the manager thought that there's a, you know, 150 cats running around there. That's beyond concerning to me. And is there a longer-range plan for this other than capturing them, fixing them, and then just what do you do? Set them back free at the mobile home park? I don't quite understand what's going on there. And thirdly, what in God's name is wrong with every one of them cat's eyes? Why do they all come in like that? Is that something like, what is, what's the deal? They, it looked like every picture had some eye issues going on.
Yeah, so that was a lot. You guys might have to remind me what she touched on. But first of all, the eye issue is it's actually a viral infection that a lot of cats, especially kittens, because their immune system is underdeveloped, just like in babies. Their immune system isn't strong enough to fight off the infections that they come into contact with being born outside. So most of the kittens that we get in during kitten season have that goopy nasty eye. It starts out as a goopy eye, gets crusty, and then the infection starts to eat away at the eye itself, and most of those cats ended up having to have the eyes removed, which they actually feel better once it's removed, and cats with one or no eyes do fantastic. Holly's got a no-eyed cat, and I've got a one-eyed cat, and they are loving life. But that's typical of every summer. Every summer, we get kittens in like that. So we do feel that it's extremely important that we give them that medical care that they need. The TNR with the mobile home park, so we were surprised to find out that there were 100 to 150 cats there. We knew that there were a lot because we're always getting calls about it, and Bob's always out there trapping cats, but we didn't know how many. And we were alarmed as well. But like I said, there is no good option. You know, some people might say, well, why don't we just trap all of them and take them somewhere else? Well, where else do we go with them? Right now, we have a working cat program, so any ferals that happen to come in that Bob happens to have trapped, we get them fixed, and we try to find working cat homes. That can be farms, pole sheds, places outside of city limits where cats are allowed to roam free, and they do a job. They hunt mice and rodents and keep farms rodent-free. But in order to transplant that cat from this trailer park where they've lived their entire lives to a new location, they have to be confined for six weeks. And even then, there's not a guarantee that that cat's going to stick around. So that's not a great solution. Also, that cat has to sit at the shelter until we find that home. We've had cats injure themselves trying to get out while staying there waiting for a new home because they're just so terrified of people. The other option might say, well, why don't we trap all the cats and just euthanize all of them, start fresh? Well, the problem is, the cats showed up there for a reason, because there is a food supply, whether it's people feeding them or just general food available, garbage cans, you know, stuff left outside. Cats find that stuff, and they will congregate. So if you take all 100 or 150 of those cats out, the other stray cats will just come in and take their place. So there have been numerous studies done, and not just cats, this is with any species, from any ecological standpoint. If you remove a species from an environment, another species or more of that same species will come in and take over. So that's not an option either. The reason that TNR is the gold standard for fixing a situation like that is because once the cats are fixed, spayed or neutered, they are generally healthier, they live a longer lifespan, and they're not reproducing more kittens every year. So we're not getting all of these goopy-eyed, sore-eyed kittens in every single year. They're just not being born. We also have found through studies that spayed and neutered cats will help protect their territory. They will prevent intact cats from coming into the area. There are people that live in that trailer park that care about these cats, and they feed them, and they provide them with shelter. And if those people did, didn't do that, the cats would still find it. Trailers have skirting underneath that's always broken, and cats crawl underneath there. It's a perfect little cat environment. So they're already there. They're already there and eating and being fed and reproducing. So all we're trying to do is stop them from reproducing. And the studies have shown that over years, yes, it takes time, but everything takes time, over years, that population decreases. As those fixed cats start to die out, the population decreases. So that's why it's the gold standard. I think that was everything.
I think so.
Okay.
Did you have any follow-up, Mrs. Spiros?
Uh, yeah. Okay. So the fee, looking at the fee schedule, I, I mean, I do think it is a little bit of a sticker shock. I see where it aligns up with communities who have chosen a set fee. It doesn't seem to be far off of that, but it, it is a significant increase compared to what we were paying. So that obviously is a concern. I mean, I think I would have rather see that come slowly, those increases, rather than all at once. But again, obviously, we have a problem with the cats. I, I'm not, I, I just don't know what the answer is. I, I don't know how you do that job. I mean, I think we should have a Tell on Your Neighbor program where these people who are letting their cats out, unfix, just to roam freely and get pregnant every season. There should be some repercussions for those owners. And they're, I don't, I don't know what the answer to that is, but there should be something done about that.
Yeah, we feel absolutely the same way. It's every single year, and it's not just us. It's not just central Wisconsin. It's everywhere. Down south, they have kitten season all year long because it's warm. The reason kitten season hits in the spring and summer is because it's nice out, and the cats are out roaming around breeding. In the winter in Wisconsin, it's real cold, so the cats are hiding. They're not really focused on breeding, they're focused on surviving the winter. Then in the summer, they come out and they start breeding. And it is very frustrating having the same cat come in three times intact because the person says, well, he's an outdoor cat. Okay, well, you live in the city of Marshfield, you cannot have an outdoor cat. Or to get a call that their cat is missing and find out that it was hit on the road. It, it is absolutely frustrating. And those are the things that we can't necessarily do anything about, that we don't have answers for either. But what we do have answers for are the feral cats that are living in the trailer park, and we have solutions for that. So that's where we're starting, at least to make a dent in the kitten programs or the kitten problems. And in regards to the sticker shock of the price, i- it's definitely shocking to see that price go up so dramatically, but I honestly think that the amount of care that the animals are getting went up dramatically. You know, we were in an old airport building that was not built to house animals at all. When we moved out of there, we were ecstatic. So now we have a brand-new building, state-of-the-art facility, all the doors are locked, we've got 16 or 17 cameras. The intake rooms are right off of the garage. The officers can bring animals in 24/7. Staff is there for 12 hours every day, Monday through Friday. So the police officers have someone there. I, you know, anytime someone brings an animal in, I stop in and see if they need help. I've helped officers catch cats that got loose in offices, and we're there to help them get animals into cages or help them with any of that process. So not only have we increased the amount of medical care, we've also just increased the availability of ourselves to the police department. We only have one humane officer, and the rest is all police officers bringing animals in, and not all of them are animal people, and that's okay. That's why we're there to help. So we have also made it easier for the police department to work with us. And just the amount of care that they get and the amount of help that the police department gets, you know, we see it as, you know, a good reason to increase the fees.
Okay, I don't see any more comments. Of a motion to approve the new agreement with MAPS. Please vote. Mrs. Spiros?
Yeah.
That motion passes five to three. Okay, moving on to item number Q. Request to set parameters for the pre-sale of lots for the Marshfield City subdivision. Oh, I'm sorry, P. Request to approve transition plan for operation of Wenzel Family Plaza presented by Justin Caspers, Parks and Recreation Director.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to note, just to follow up on that last item, I apologize. Just again, what you approved again is subject, because of that language, it refers to the four-day hold being part of the contract, that's subject to that being approved in June. So we won't actually execute the contract until that's been approved. If not, that part will have to be modified. And I, I apologize, I did look back at my memo, and my memo, I did say that this would be effective July 1, but it wasn't reflected in the contract. But know that as you go through the ordinance approval process, that piece is still out there before the final signature.
Mr. Caspers? A shameless plug, we did get prairie dogs at the zoo, so don't think they're feral cats on the loose, or we have 150 wild prairie dogs. But we did get prairie dogs, and they were on the news last night. Nikki and I are here to talk about the transition plan we have for Wenzel Plaza. The Wenzel Plaza idea started in 2003 when the city identified a need in their downtown master planning process. Through the efforts of Development Services, the Economic Development Board, the various grants and private donation, it became a, a great tourist destination and attraction. We just started hitting the ground running in 2019, and then COVID hit in 2020, which slowed us down tremendously. During the construction of the plaza, the city asked Main Street to operate and manage the plaza. Through Main Street and the Wenzel Plaza Committee, the plaza director, Nikki Anderson, is responsible for all the events and activities at the location. She works with our department, the Parks and Recreation Department, on operations, maintenance, and special events logistics. Funding for Nikki's position and the events at the plaza primarily come from two sources, and that's the Economic Development Board and Visit Marshfield. For the first three years, these groups contributed 50,000 each to cover those expenses. Our goal now of transitioning Nikki from Main Street to the Parks and Recreation Department is to provide a more stable structure to ensure the long-term goals of the plaza are met. The director, Nikki, will be under the supervision of the Parks and Recreation Department. Ultimately, the common council and its residents. She'll report directly to the recreation manager, which we're in the process of replacing. The director will concentrate primarily on the plaza activities, but she'll also develop new activities, work with current ones, and continue to have strong ties to Mackey, Visit Marshfield, Main Street. I know she has a passion for the downtown area. Her sister has a business downtown, she wants to support that. We're hoping the, the transition will take place later this year. Early part of next year is not really determined time when it would be perfect. We obviously think the summertime right now, she'll be here busiest with getting the concerts and activities done. The office would relocate from Main Street, which is an Obliga House, to the Second Street Community Center. Her compensation will adhere to the city's compensation plan and will be eligible to the city's benefit package. Monies for Nikki's wages and benefits would come from three sources. The Marshall Economic Development Board, which is 40%, 40% or 35,000. Visit Marshfield, also at 40% or 35,000, and the city of Marshfield at 20%, roughly 20,000. The monies to maintain the plaza would still come from the Parks and Recreation Department budget, which it has been since it started. The Wenzel Plaza exemplifies the promise of great public spaces to activate Wisconsin's smaller downtown. Its multifunctional design allows for a broad variety of programmed civic events as well as, as well as quality park space. I think, and I think many business owners and people involved in a plaza would say, we've received quite a bit of return on our investment down there, and we took a, we took a chance, as Aaron said, we took a chance. I would say it's a success. I think this transition will help align Nikki and the Wenzel Plaza Committee for long-term. In the packet yourself, we have an estimated budget, which will go through the city's budgetary process, and that's coming up very near, it's future, it's not too far away. Plus, the organizations chart is in there. We've met with Economic Development Board, we've met with the Visit Marshfield Board, Main Street, the Parks and Rec Forestry Committee, as well as, as well as the Family Plaza Committee, all of whom have approved and sent forth a positive recommendation to this group. Nikki, I don't know if you want to add a few things?
Um, just to reiterate what Justin said, I think it's really important that we have the plaza and that it's programmed. Unfortunately, we did have a little bit of a lull because of 2020, but we're really excited about the future of the plaza, and I think this is really what it's about, is the stability of this position. I've been in this position for two years now. I wasn't part of the initial building of the plaza, and I know that there was a lot of questions on where it should be housed, and I think that working with Main Street Marshfield has been really beneficial. As time goes on, it just seems the stability of this position would be best housed under the Parks and Rec Department. So as the plaza director, I do fully support this transition.
The recommended action here is to approve the Wenzel Family Plaza Transition Plan. We have a motion from Mr. Fisher, and a second by Mr. Rosendich. Mr. Wagner, you have comments?
Thank you. Nikki, I'm glad to see this happening. I, I was in on the initial planning on this place, and I was told I was crazy more than once. They were right half the time. But the, the, the point is that we initially wanted this housed with Main Street Marshfield, and we sort of... And we sort of um, surreptitiously backed uh, Ca- Casperson into fix uh, maintaining the park. But that was, that, we, we didn't want to ever admit that, Justin, so. But I, the, the, the thing that I like about this is you have a permanent home. And Main Street could not financially support what we needed to do. And, and I'm, I'm just happy that this is hap- that, that you're on board and this is going to be working out. Um, the only thing that I, I, I um, uh, before I, uh, before they carry me out of here, uh, I, I hope to see the Second Street Corridor project come into being. I think that has such tremendous potential and I, I'm just uh, heartbroken that it hasn't taken place already. So um, welcome aboard and I wish you the best of luck.
Thanks, Ed.
Mr. Whitson?
Thank you. I said it, I decided I wasn't going to say anything off meeting, but I guess I violated that. So here we go. Um, Justin, I see in your, in your information here, budget estimate um, under expenditures. I don't see anything listed about what Mr. Wagner alluded to, which is the upkeep of the, of the plaza.
That's currently budgeted through Parks and Rec.
Okay.
So this is, I guess, separate, but together.
Okay.
Meaning the city's been budgeting and maintaining the property since it's been built.
So the cost of mowing and plantings and shovel.
Approximately fifty thousand that we've been doing the whole time.
Splash pad. That's part of the fifty thousand that you've been doing?
Yes, the splash pad, the mowing, the maintenance, the lights, the water, um, any type of uh, upkeep, uh, replacement, maintenance, those types of costs are all.
And so fifty's going to stay, but then we're going to also add in a little bit for the?
Right.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, in addition, there'll be an uh, maybe a fourth revenue source, which will be events, activities, rentals, things of that nature. So when we talk about better suited, our department rents many buildings and facilities. So now we'll be able to rent that similar to how we do with the other ones. So there'll be a little, a little additional revenue source from there too.
Thank you.
Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'm saying this a little bit in jest, but I always check myself when I agree with Alderman Wagner. But I do agree with him. Um, I think this is a phenomenal idea. Um, I, I, and I truly do, I think Nikki are an asset to the city. And I think bringing you within Parks and Recreation is just a great move. I think having the foresight to also um, take this even a step further though and go beyond Wenzel Plaza. And I'm, don't take that the wrong way. I'm fully supportive of Wenzel Plaza. But I just think about some of the comments that the representative from the Marshall Clinic Health System said, quality of life is very important. And we need to make all of Marshfield attractive to people who want to live here. And so we need people like you, Nikki, who have a passion to bring events, to enhance the quality of life. Um, and that I believe does need to be under Parks and Recreation because I believe that is the mission of what Parks and Recreation does. So I fully support this and I'm glad to see this coming.
Um, I just have one point that uh, maybe Jen can answer this. Does this come in as a full-time employee for the city? Or how is it rated and where does it fit on the compensation scale?
I was just going to say that. I was just going to tell you that we were going to come back. Um, so part of it is to take the job description, submit it to McGrath for review and then bring it back to Finance Committee for final placement.
Okay.
So you beat me to, to what I was going to say.
Okay, are there any more comments? Seeing none, please vote. Ms. Bierus?
Yes.
Uh, that motion passes unanimously. Item, now we'll get to item Q. Request to set parameters for the pre-sale of lots for the Marshfield City subdivision and refer to the Board of Public Works for plan review and authorization to seek bids presented by Josh Miller, Development Services Director.
Thank you, Council President, and good evening. It's quite the eclectic meeting we've had. It's very interesting. A lot of, a lot of presentations. Hopefully I can uh, hold up my end here. Um, so I want to thank everybody uh, for that spoke uh, on behalf of this project earlier. Uh, really appreciate the support. Um, last month, last two weeks ago, the council directed staff to kind of go forward and uh, work with the Engineering Division and, and put together some plans and they've been hard at work doing that. Uh, also gave direction to city staff to work on pre-selling these lots, uh, which was kind of a critical component to show that there's interest. And I'll get to that later, but I appreciate everybody's uh, help uh, so far on this. Uh, it's, it's certainly been a, a team effort. And um, hopefully we can see this to the end. So just kind of wanted to outline really what the project is that we're talking about. Uh, obviously we're looking at developing new lots for the city. Uh, that's been, I think we've identified the need and uh, we've, we've talked about uh, what, how to address this. Now, this is just a one, one piece of the puzzle. Um, opening up twenty-three lots does not solve our problem. We still have, um, we're, we're looking at about seventeen desirable subdivision lots in the city right now. That's the average that we use in a year, develop in a year. So uh, even if we develop twenty-three lots, this is one step. We'll be looking at more and I'll talk about that in a little bit. But um, so we're looking at um, a budget of, for infrastructure and engineering and contingency is about a million dollars. Um, land, realtor, transaction, egg, conversion fees, remonumentation and promotion of the, of the sale or promote, selling the lots, uh, about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, electric and gas utilities about a hundred thousand and then interest is about another seventy-two thousand for uh, uh, ballpark costs. Again, we won't know these final costs until we do the bids. So that's what we're kind of here tonight is to get that next step in the process. So a little over one point five million um, right now is what, what the estimate is. Um, where does the money come from? Uh, we're proposing to split the costs between the Economic Development Board and the Common Council initially. So uh, nine hundred thousand would come from the Economic Development Board, the two oh five fund. Uh, five hundred and fifty thousand would come from the council um, uh, uh, at the, at the front end. Uh, the EDB would look to recoup its, its costs through the sales of the lots. And we've got, at, we've um, set that price at about forty-five thousand dollars a lot. Um, if it all comes, if we sell all those lots for that, that price, we'd look, be looking at a million, thirty-five thousand dollars. So above the, the uh, investment that the EDB made. Um, the Common Council would recoup its investment through, uh, initially through tax base. Uh, so the tax base that we'd be creating through the development of those lots, that's how the, uh, the money would come back. But there's some other sources that we'll, we'll talk about. Um, talking to Dan and uh, Wastewater Utility, we, we could uh, possibly fund the sewer main um, component of the project uh, with, with the Wastewater Utility Fund and that would be about fifty to probably seventy thousand dollars, depending on where the bids come in. So that again starts to reduce the cost to the council. So that five fifty starts to kind of get chipped away. Uh, we will also be looking to other, other um, sources such as Marshfield Utilities and Wood County. Um, going to present and request some funding from there. Um, don't know how that'll land, but we, we're working on getting on agendas for those entities. So we're proposing to sell the lots for, on average, forty-five thousand dollars. Um, if the average new home is assessed at three hundred thousand dollars, uh, that would generate just under seven million dollars of tax base. That's what we're setting for the minimum. So obviously we would expect to see homes come in over that. Um, if the tax rate holds and we develop five, five lots per year, um, until it's all built out, we would, we would recoup the investment in ten years. That'd be three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Um, uh, after ten years and then seventy thousand, around seventy-one thousand dollars uh, every year in perpetuity. Um, one thing I do want to touch on though, that's been kind of a struggle that I didn't know at the last meeting was the re- the, the assessment ratio issue that we have. Um, talked about, once you go under ninety percent, then it becomes kind of, you have four years to correct it. And you know, I don't know all the details, but it becomes kind of a problem. Well, uh, talking to the city assessor, we're, we're, the twenty-twenty-one estimate ratio, or assessment ratios at about seventy-nine percent. So if you look at a four hundred thousand dollar home getting built or having a market value of four hundred thousand dollars, you're looking at a assessed value of three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. So that, we get our taxes based on the assessed value. So we were originally thinking we could do four hundred thousand dollar homes because we know that's where the market is, three fifty to four hundred thousand. Um, we thought that that would be a higher tax base or higher return on investment. It's actually going to be less than that just because the assessment ratio, when they apply that to the new construction, it goes down. Um, I don't know how that works or why it works that way. That's just what I've been told how it works. Uh, it's still, we'll have a return on investment, even at the, even if all we're getting is a three hundred thousand dollars of new, new increment. So we're, we're still proposing that, that basically the minimum value would be three hundred thousand. Um, you know, we know that some homes would come in greater. Obviously, we want the homes to develop, the lots to develop. We, we want high-value homes, but even at three hundred thousand dollars of assessed value, those are still quality homes. Um, so I just want, I put together a chart showing what, you know, assuming that five years, uh, if I, if five lots are developed for the first um, three or four, four years, um, until it's fully built out, at a minimum assessed value of three hundred thousand, we're still generating uh, three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars in tax revenue after ten years. And based on all the other sources of, of revenue for this project, uh, we believe that that will pay off and the return on investment will be there for the city in that ten-year span. So even if it dipped down to two hundred and fifty thousand, um, you know, we still have almost three hundred thousand dollars in tax base created. And again, we're setting that as the, as the bottom uh, value. So overall, the total project uh, breakdown, again, we start with one point, one million, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That doesn't include the interest. That would be um, above that. The EDB share would be nine hundred thousand dollars. The estimated wastewater utility contribution, fifty thousand, kind of on the conservative side. It could be more. Um, anytime we, we have to put in the gas and electric lines for the subdivision, uh, when you actually put in a, a gas service, you get a credit back from We Energy. So there'd be a credit back after the first five years, you get a credit. And it's going to vary in years. I think the first year we're, we're around thirty-five hundred dollars. So we assume that there will be a, a signi- a significant recouping of some of those funds um, going forward. And then when we talk about the nine hundred thousand dollars that the EDB contributed, if we sell all the lots for a hundred and thirty, or forty-five thousand dollars, we get an additional hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars worth of revenue. So you start subtracting that number and, and the council's left with a hundred, three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars that would be their portion. And again, that's without talking, you know, that's being conservative on the gas uh, utility rate and also assuming that we're going to spend all of our, our budget. Um, we won't know these numbers fully until the, the bids come in. So we're, we're hoping that um, we get favorable bids. There's, there's a good bidding environment for that. So what I'm looking to talk to the council tonight about or getting their feedback or, or setting these parameters is the pre-sale parameters for selling the lots. Uh, I've been busy for um, two weeks pretty, pretty solidly trying to get interest in this project. Um, and to, to date right now, we have a lot, commitments on about fifteen lots. So um, the goal was to have twelve lots uh, pre-sold and we're at fifteen right now. So I think we're, we're ahead of schedule and I think we're doing pretty good. But um, again, there's, at this point, there's not a commitment. The, the, the intent is to get um, verbal commitments and then we would put together uh, kind of a pre-sale package sort of. And we, uh, all of the folks that we talked about or talked to on this are willing to put the five thousand dollars down as, as a non-refundable holding fee unless the project doesn't go forward. So um, everybody that, of the fifteen, everybody's aware of this scenario and, and aware of some of these parameters, knowing that the, the council has the ultimate say on these parameters. We put together these uh, two weeks ago as kind of a rough um, discussion. Went to the EDB and tried to kind of narrow things down a little bit. But ultimately I want finalized direction from the council as to what are the parameters that we were going to have or covenants, not, not covenants, but uh, conditions, if you, if you will, for this development. So in talking to the EDB, we came up with that the lot must be purchased by June first of twenty twenty-two. Um, so there, there, therein lies some of the risk. If, if we go forward with this in July and we say, you know what, this is a go, um, we got pre-sale lots uh, ready to go, those fifteen, um, people could back out and all their costs would be, would be five thousand dollars. So um, we doubt, I don't think that would, if that happened one or two, that would be probably the worst-case scenario. I would envision that would, we, we will see some of the lots be purchased this, this fall and be developed yet this fall. So I'm pretty certain of that based on conversations. Um, would require construction to start by June first of twenty twenty-three. So that gives people two years from essentially now uh, to get construction going. That's to encourage people to develop and get the tax base going. Um, some of the provisions I want, and, and that's all for discussion yet tonight too. But some of the provisions, uh, at the last meeting, we talked about a minimum of eighteen hundred square foot for first floor development. Um, based on discussion with some developers and uh, the EDB, we looked at more of a range of sixteen to eighteen hundred square feet just because want to appeal to more people. However, and so we have seventeen hundred square feet right now. Um, that's a good-sized home. It's not large. Um, but it, it may be, if we get down to that minimum size, it may be harder to get to that minimum value. So I mean, there's some flexibility there if, if we wanted to up it. Um, what I don't want to do is scare away the people that were interested in closer to seventeen hundred square feet. And then they back out of the pre, pre-sale numbers. But so we could, we could certainly look at that. Um, twenty-one hundred square feet for two, two-story homes, um, seems pretty, pretty standard. Um, if they fall below that, that three, three thousand, three hundred thousand dollar value, we have, what we put in a provision that would basically be a one-time fee. They'd basically be paying the city's taxes for, for that loss. So like if um, if, if a home came in at two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, they would be paying one hundred dollars per thousand dollars of, that's below that three hundred thousand dollars. So the city would get twenty-five hundred dollars upfront. So if that's, um, if there's any, basically we'd be getting the, the taxes due to the city for that gap uh, for ten years, but we'd get that upfront. So that would help us uh, recoup some of those losses and encourage people to get to that three hundred thousand dollar value. Uh, it's really tough to do, uh, to know exactly what you're going to build. If you build a four hundred thousand dollar house and the assessment value comes in at two ninety, we can't tell someone to tear down their house because they didn't meet the provision. So we have to have some way of, some kind of a carrot to, or stick, I guess, if you will, to make sure that that happens. Um, and if it doesn't, we get somewhat, some kind of compensation. Um, and talking to, to Deputy Assessor this, this past week, it actually suggested trying to make the value based on the market rate instead of the assessed value. Because sometimes the way they have to assess things, it, it just is a lot cheaper than you would think. Um, for example, there was one assessment that came in a new house last year. Um, it sold for two, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. The assessment value was two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. So that's just not really, it's hard for people to guess what the assessment value is, even though they're putting a lot into these homes. Uh, the other, the other comment that came up, one person was interested in buying two lots where they would combine the lots and build a bigger home. Uh, generally that's not something that's, we call that an owner-retained lot. That's not something you'd like to see. That reduces the number of lots that we have. Um, the only reason I think it was intriguing is because one of those lots was kind of a corner lot and they would make a lot that's probably harder to sell combined and they would be paying for two lots. Granted, we would be missing out on tax, tax base. So it's something to consider. Um, and if you'd consider it, you'd have to increase the value of that home, what that would be in order to make that work. Um, provisions continued, uh, basically failure to can, begin construction within the required time. Um, they would basically, I think I'm missing something here. If I missed. Um, if they, if they didn't begin construction by twenty, June first, twenty twenty-three, they would basically have to sell back the property less the, the um, deposit fee that they had. Um, and then, I had something with an extension. Oh, a full basements and a, and an attached two-car garage. We didn't have that on there. But um, a full basement, we, in talking to some of the people interested in the homes, they come from other parts of the country, other parts of the world where they don't have basements and so they're not interested in basements. So we talked about it giving, granting an exception by Common Council approval if they're going to build a big enough house that if you have a thirty-five hundred square foot house and don't have a basement, it's going to value out okay. So giving some flexibility with, with what we're doing, I think is a good thing, but want to have some minimum parameters. And then this would be transferred with the property. Um, as, as we talked about, you know, there's always risks and I don't want to minimize the risks, but I think this is a pretty solid project. Um, this is going to hopefully address uh, at least one step in addressing the concerns that we've seen that have been spoken about tonight. Um, but there's, there are still risks, you know, interest rates could rise. That gets talked about on a weekly basis. Material costs could remain high and the housing market could shift. Um, everything that we've read and seen, I sent out some information to, about, is this a housing bubble? Um, it doesn't appear to be a housing bubble. It's way different than two, two thousand eight. Um, and you know, I think everything that we've seen and read is, it's, you know, expect a, a good, solid market for the next two to three years. So now is the time to get into this. Um, even in the slowest years, looking back historically over forty years, um, the slowest year we had was two thousand and eleven and we still developed eight lots. And other than that, the next slowest year was ten and then everything else is eleven and, and much more than that. So even in our worst year of development in two thousand and eleven as a result of two thousand and eight housing market, we still had eight lots built in the, in the city. If we factor that in and we don't have any other lots to build, anywhere else to build, these lots will go, I think. So I think it's, we're a pretty good bet that uh, these lots will be, and these lots are very desirable. Um, if the lots don't sell as projected, I think the pre-sale commitment should help that. People are asking people to put money down. So I feel like we're um, covered there, but people could step, still back out, you know, if you're, if you decided you'd, either things changed, people move, uh, change jobs and they thought they were going to build a house, they, they could back out and all they'd be out would be five thousand dollars. Um, but then we'd have an opportunity to sell the lot again to someone else. Um, lots don't develop as projected, but you know, development agreement would address that, that they have to again, uh, keep things going. Um, and one of the things that I know Alderman Wagner has, has concerns about, we're not addressing workforce housing or starter homes right now. Um, we do have a, a project in the works. Um, we do have a, a project in the works that we'll be bringing forward, hopefully by July, that will get us going on that, on that route. So the reason we didn't go with that one first is because no matter what we did, we wouldn't be able to start the infrastructure this year because the projects take too long. Uh, mixed-use TIF districts take longer, longer to get set up. This was already plotted, this was already set up. Uh, this, this, and, and even then, we're looking at a very aggressive schedule. Um, thanks, thanks in, in large part to Dan's team, Dan, Dan and Tom's team to get the, a schedule made for this. Benefits, we're likely looking at a seven hundred thou, or seven million dollar, uh, tax base generated, uh, once it's all built out. Um, providing jobs, so local, regional contractors, providing housing, needed housing for incoming workforce. Uh, return on investment for EDB would be after the twenty lots are sold. So right there, we'd have the nine hundred thousand dollars recouped. Um, if we've, if the fifteen that are spoken for get exercised within a year, um, you're at six hundred and seventy-five thousand. So we're, we're looking, looking good and we're not done selling. I, and this, this has been not really well publicized. I know there's been an article about it, but we have not been, it's not listed, we haven't done ads, we haven't done anything to promote these lots. And I think once we do, the public will be very interested in, in buying these lots. Um, the cost of not doing the subdivision would probably be greater as we've heard some of the concerns in the community. Uh, we would lose out, lose out on workforce as we have historically recently and, uh, we need the housing. Uh, the only expenses so far that we've incurred is, is the engineering costs and, and staff time. Um, and, and some, some legal time. Um, we could still halt the project, worst case scenario, we, you know, everybody backs out of the pre-sale and the, um, um, the bids come in way higher than we anticipate. Um, we, we could, we could pause and, and take, take a reevaluation of that, of where we're at and, and see, see where we're at. Um, so, uh, we don't like to do that, obviously you go out for bids, contractors put a lot of time into those and, uh, we wouldn't want to see that project not happen, but the council could still opt out. We, the, the, um, contingency on the property, if we don't sign a contract with a, with a developer to put the infrastructure in, we don't own the land, so we, we're, I think we're pretty well protected. But, um, so at the very least, we'd like, we'd like to continue going and trying to continue to pre-sell the lots and, and see this project forward. So really the next steps would be to finalize the pre-sale parameters, that was what we're talking about tonight. Uh, finalize the pre-sale agreements for those fifteen individuals, uh, if, if the council so chooses. Put the project out to bid and, uh, one of the things that Dana brought up, I thought was a really good idea is do a neighborhood meeting. It's not required, everything's zoned appropriately, there's no public hearing, but it'd be good to kind of let them know what we're doing. Uh, a year ago, we had a project, uh, um, that, that, uh, had some concerns for the neighbors and, and we wanted to, you know, um, really quell some of the, any, any concerns they may have. So keep them informed on what's going on. Um, seek funding from other sources, so that's still something on, on the docket, hopefully we can get that, uh, done by July. Um, review bids in early July, uh, feedback, again, if bids come back too high or price, uh, pre-sales back out, council could take a pause and, you know, or kill the project, but, but, uh, could, could look at, at it a little bit differently. Um, next step would be to award the contract, close on the lot, uh, the property and then restake the lots because obviously, um, they're, they're not, they're not quite that way right now. Um, we, we look to start construction by the end of July, finish by mid-October and then have, um, lots ready and available by end of October. So, um, with that, I guess I'd be looking for, um, direction from the council on some of these pre-sale parameters or at least some discussion and, um, and then approval on that, that process.
Okay, you heard the recommended action, set the parameters for the pre-sale and refer this to the Board of Public Works for a plan review and authorization to seek bids. We have a motion from Mr. Fisher and a second from Mr. Fire. Mr. Fisher, you have comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I know this is going to come as a shock, but I'm very supportive of this. Um, I've been supporting this, uh, since I first heard about it, um, on the EDB. And I want to thank you, Josh, um, for your work on this because, you know, you came and said you were going to pre-sell twelve, you've done fifteen. So that's great. Um, there's so many things that I think we need to be talking about when it comes to this project. Um, I'm going to start with this though. We really need, I think as a council, to constantly be forward-thinking and we need to have the foresight to see into the future and what we want this community to be. And I think what we need, I'm sorry, it is on, but it's not, there we go. Can you hear me now? Um, so as I was saying very eloquently, um, or not that eloquently, um, we need to have foresight. We need to be forward-thinking and as a council, I really believe we need to fully support this. Because one, um, I, I want to see this community twenty years from now, um, having multiple booming businesses. I want to see people moving here to get away from other communities because Marshfield is the place to be. And to do that, we need to have the infrastructure, we need to have the housing. There's a lot of things we need, I could go on, but this is one big piece, we have to have the housing. And the fact that there is a housing shortage is very, very concerning. So I feel first and foremost, we need to have the foresight to realize that this is important, but this is step one in a, and I'm probably exaggerating here, but a one-hundred-step process. Um, this is just step one. We need to be thinking even beyond the city limits and that might not sound popular because it's the city marshal. But at the same time, if people are moving into the townships around us, that's okay too, because they're going to be spending money here. It's when they move to Point, when they move to Wausau, that we're losing out. Uh, but we need to see the city grow, we need to see the Marshall area grow. And I really think we need to also look at ROI, um, return on investment. And I think that's different when you're talking in the government sector because we're dealing with taxpayer dollars. But there is still a return on this investment. This money is not going to waste. This money will be producing, will produce housing. Housing will produce property taxes, which is our main source of revenue. It produces sales tax. And I know some people will say, well, there's a risk involved. I can tell you as someone who is passionate about finance, every investment has risk. I said this two weeks ago. There is no one investment that is one hundred percent foolproof or we'd all be in it and we'd all be filthy rich. There's always risk, there's always risk. Now you got to take calculated risk, you don't want to do something foolish, so you need to be educated, you need to know what you're doing. But I look at this and I go, I see a lot of promise, I see a lot of, a lot of good things coming from this. Um, but we can't stop here, we need more housing. Um, now I know it might concern some people that we're taking nine hundred thousand out of the two oh five fund. That's a lot of money. Um, I mean, you can, I don't know the exact number, I think it's about what, one point two million roughly?
Yeah.
Um, I mean, that's a lot of money that we're taking out of that fund, but I do believe we will see that replenished. Um, and as I stated at the CIP meeting, I hate deficit spending. And I know EDB has in the past done deficit spending and I think that needs to change. Um, and we need to get better at budgeting our values. We need to determine what EDB values and we need to fund only those things we value. Um, and I think this is a huge piece of that. Um, I know you brought up workforce housing, anybody who knows me knows I care very deeply about people in lower income brackets. I think that's important. Um, we do need starter homes. Uh, I, I, just in the past month, doing a little bit of research, I, I know that what I have found is I think the definition is different to, up to various people, but I think we need homes for all people. Um, but the reality is we're seeing a shortage of homes at a specific, for a specific group at a specific price range and we need to meet that need. Um, I just, I'm one hundred percent in favor of this, I think it's needed. And I am just sorry it's taken us this long to do it. Thank you.
Mr. Wagner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, as a lot of you know, I've been in this business a long, long time. And, um, I've been in economic development a long, long time too. And I've done a lot of public and private partnerships, I've done a lot of those and I've worked with them, I understand how they work. And the thing that, that, uh, I was most troubled by with this is that basically, you know, Mr., Mr. Fisher just sugar-coated the idea of risk and calculated risk and all that good stuff. But, you know, essentially there's been a shift in risk and the shift in risk is all on the public sector. And I was hoping that maybe the, maybe the private sector, sector would have some skin in the game, so to speak, that they had something to lose as we did too. Right now, it's not that way. I'm willing to accept this because I, you know what, let, let's get this nonsense out of, out of here right away that I don't, I'm against this, I'm against the housing, I don't want housing. No, that's not true. I was there when we did the original housing study, uh, plan. I was there when we, uh, uh, did the original work on trying to find ways to getting the people who worked in Marshfield to be able to live in Marshfield and that's where the big apartment boom came about, back in twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve. You know, and, and we heard tonight the same thing from an HR director that we heard in twenty-eleven. When we did the original housing study and we did the original EDB work, the HR directors that were interviewed for that came to us and said, we can't hire people because we don't have a place to put them. We hire, we offer people a job in the afternoon, they and their wife go drive around the town at night and they come back the next morning, say, we're turning you down because you haven't got any housing that's worth anything. That's why we started this in the first place. And you know what, it's fine. I want, I need, we need more housing, one way or the other. I would much prefer to see it going toward the lower income levels, uh, than where we're going now. But I'll take this on the promise that, that that's going to happen. What I, what I really have trouble with, with this particular model is that not only is it, is it just all, all city money on, upfront on the thing, it's also the fact that, um, the, uh, we are eating our seed corn. We're using, we've got one point one or one, one point one-two million, I just got your financial statement. And, uh, or the, uh, the, the city financial statements, it's about one point one-two million that you've got right now. So you're going to end up with about two hundred thousand dollars for the foreseeable future and you say you're going to get that back. Well, I talked to Ron Alman, there is a way to do that. And the biggest problem I had with your original proposal was there was no way to get that money back. Because the EDB isn't a, isn't a separate entity. Basically, everything goes back into the general fund and how do you get it out of the general fund? And basically if it comes out as a capital projects account, then we can do the, we can credit it with the money from the EDB and we can credit, or excuse me, we can, uh, yeah, we can put the money from the EDB in there, we can pay the expenses out of that fund and then we can come back with the, uh, and reimburse it as, as the lots are sold. The other thing that, that troubles me, just, uh, I, I just saw your numbers and you're, you're projecting that maybe we're only going to be, uh, having to borrow, the city's going to have to be borrow about three hundred and some odd thousand dollars. That would be the deficit between the nine hundred thousand and, and whatever, and the return on the sale of the lots. That, the problem I've got with that is that we as a council made a promise last year to the taxpayers that we weren't going to, we were going to stick with our debt limit. And basically what I, what I said in the CIP meeting earlier today still holds true. And that is if we go ahead and borrow money for this, again, and borrow it this year, but then we're, we're going to have to take, we're going to have to reduce it out of somewhere else. And I think Ron, I don't want to misquote Ron, but I think that we can, uh, footnote that so that it comes out of next year's borrowing and not this year's borrowing. Uh, we might, we might have to reduce that in order to pay for it. Because we told them that we would stick to three point three million on debt limit per year and we're not going to exceed it. Unless we want to break our promises. So, those are the problems I have with it. But I, as long as I know, and, and, and thanks to Ron Alman, I, I feel more comfortable now about the, that the mechanisms, that the actual mechanisms of government are in place so the money can get paid back uh, to the, uh, to the Economic Development Fund and we can reuse that money as seed money in the future. I can go along with this as long as I know that. But again, uh, I don't, I, I encourage us to talk over these models before we make them public next time so we can try and find a model that will give a true public-private partnership and not basically an all-city partnership. That's what I'd like to do. So, uh, let's get on with this thing. I, I, by the way, your parameters, fine, I don't have a problem with them. Uh, there's nothing in there that I can disagree with. Um, I think it'll, it'll work fine and I'll vote for that. Uh, but, uh, let's get on with this and let's do it better next time. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Spiros, I don't have a picture of you right now, so I can't tell if you're motioning that you want to talk.
I would like to speak, yes.
Okay.
Okay, Josh, um, are you able to bring those back up on the screen, your, uh, pre-sale requirements? I, I do want to bring up a couple of things that I, I don't like about them. But I don't have them memorized. So, okay, so on the very first page, um, the page before that one, I believe, okay. So, um, I, I keep hearing that, you know, we, we need starter homes, we need starter homes. And then I look at your minimum square footage. So minimum square footage seventeen hundred, uh, square foot for a single home and twenty-one hundred square foot for a two-story home. Seventeen hundred to me seems like a starter home. I mean, that's a small house, it's not a very big house. Um, but my understanding of this subdivision is these are not quote-unquote starter homes. And certainly if we go to the next page and we look at the value, the minimum value, um, I don't think these would be considered starter homes, yet the size to me is very concerning. Number two, the, the, uh, ex, the full basement, um, unless granted exception by common council. Um, I also don't think that slab homes or crawl space homes belong in a higher-developed, um, beyond starter home subdivision. Um, slab home, I, I mean, I don't even, I, 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 I cannot get on board with that. Um, that bothers me a lot. Um, and then also the, um, the developer will be charged a one-time fee of a hundred dollars per one thousand that the original, a full assessment, um, value of the home property is below three hundred thousand. Uh, that to me is, is, is loose, I don't, I don't like that even being an option. And I get your explanation, they can build the home, they can put so much in it, but we can't really control what the assessed value will be. But it, there has to be some, you know, something that gets that guarantee where those homes are at three hundred thousand or above. I, I mean, I just, I guess I don't quite understand that. And I'll follow up and be the last statement I'll make is I agree with Ed on the financing mechanism of this project. I agree that we need homes, um, twenty-three homes is barely a dent, but you have to start somewhere. Um, but in the future, I would like to see a better model of, um, public-private, uh, uh, working together on these sort of developments. Because I'm in agreeance with Ed, I feel like most of the skin rests on the taxpayers, i.e. the city. That's it.
Okay, are there any more comments or questions?
Um, and I think those are, those are good points and those are things that we, that's what I'm looking for feedback on this program is some of the parameters. Um, you know, I, I think seventeen hundred square feet is what we're kind of seeing for some of these new homes. And so that's kind of a sweet spot. I think eighteen hundred does help us get those values back, so I, I wouldn't be opposed to that. Um, the basements is only going to be granted an exception under extenuating circumstances, I think. We don't generally want to see that, but there are, like I said, there are folks in, from other parts of the country, other parts of the world that aren't used to basements, they're, they're not interested in it, but they're going to build a nice house. And if we decide that that's not the case, we don't have to approve that, that sale. Um, you know, as far as the, the, um, recruit, recouping the lost taxes, I'm not sure how else we can do it. We can certainly brainstorm and say that, but I don't know what the alternative is. If, if, you know, we, we don't control the assessment and, and someone, someone could build a four hundred fifty thousand dollar home and it comes in under three hundred thousand, I don't know what, how we fix that. And, you know, we can't just say, well, you got to move your, your house somewhere, so I'm not, not exactly sure. And then in talking about the public-private partnership, um, you know, I, I feel like this is a public-private partnership because the, the, the private businesses or private contractors are going to be paying for the land. And they're going to be at, in this about a million dollars when it's all said and done. So I understand, we've, we've had many conversations with many groups over the years. We've not made any dent, any headway in the, in the, in this development of lots. So I, I'm open to other ideas, we, we certainly, my door is always open. We've, we've had plenty of conversations and have tried, we tried the housing incentive program last time, that, that didn't work out. Um, and, and open to try other ideas. We do have a couple of things that we, we think are in the works for, for future, but, um, this was an op- an opportunity that we felt we were, would be able to get lots open this year. Is this the perfect solution? Probably not, but I certainly open to other things, and open to comments on all of those things that Alderman Spiros brought up.
Mr. Wagner, you thought of something else?
Yeah, I just wanted to make, make something clear to Josh, that when, we were showing the tax revenue off the property taxes on the house, and what I'm saying is, we can figuratively count them against the project, but we can't deposit it in the project account because that all goes into the general fund and stays there as general tax revenue. So that's the reason why I said that.
Mr. Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. President. Josh, in the last 20 years, how many subdivisions have been built?
Well, going back, I don't know, 2000 to 2003, we actually had quite a few. We had a different housing incentive program, but really, since 2008 is really the last presidential subdivision that was approved.
Okay. Now, a follow-up question is, if, let's say, one developer were to buy the property and build up all the lots, what would be, in your, in your professional opinion, the timeframe of that developer getting all of those lots built?
It depends on the developer. A local developer, it would take a long time, and that's the other part of it. There are other developers and, you know, bigger developers that can do economies of scale and put in seven basements at a time, or 10 basements at a time. We don't really have that here. So, the way that this, the reason that this model works is, we can parcel this off to multiple different developers, and everybody kind of gets a piece instead of having the burden all on one developer. And that million dollars, a million and a half dollars of infrastructure and land costs is a lot to bear and could bankrupt some of our local builders.
And thank you for saying that, because I was hoping you'd say that. To me, I appreciate some of the comments being made, and I know, I, I agree in principle, you want the private sector to be in the business of commerce, and you want to keep government out of it as much as possible, because we just get in the way. However, the problem is, in this kind of case, when you are talking about trying to fix a problem that, in my opinion, has been going on, from the sounds of it, at least 13 years, we have a shortage of houses, the city can move, in my opinion, much more quickly than one local developer. And I'm not trying to be offensive here, but I don't see, at this point in time, any developer outside of the local area being interested in wanting to build here in Marshfield. I believe if we want to see that happen, we're going to have to show some aggressive work on our part to attract those kind of developers, if that's something we want. If we want to help our local developers do this, if we can give them the ability to piecemeal this with us, I see that as a private-public partnership. So those are my two cents. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no more comments. We have a motion to set the parameters for pre-sale and refer to the power to public works for plan review and authorization. All those in favor, please vote.
You want to catch Josh, because I think there's an issue here.
Josh?
Yeah, I guess I want to know what those parameters are. If you're accepting what staff is proposing, we didn't have, we had some considerations yet, and so, you know, and Alderman Spiros brought up some things too, so I just wanted to, I think we're, you know, we put up, we put some conditions or parameters together and wanted to make sure that, you know, what we're proposing is, the council's on board with. Are there things we're missing? I don't want to belabor this conversation, but I think if there's some things that there are some concerns about, we can certainly add them. But once we get going here, this, these would be the parameters that we'd be looking to enter into a contract with for buyers.
Did you make the motion?
Yeah, I did.
Is that your motion?
That was my motion, thank you.
Okay, that was the motion, to use your parameters.
Okay. I think I can work with that.
Okay. Did we get Mrs. Spiros' vote? Mrs. Spiros?
I'm sorry, are we still allowed discussion here? Because I really do have a problem with those parameters. I think to get your minimum assessed value to be $300,000, missing out on a basement and upping that square footage is a sure way to do that. I think both of the, I think that square footage needs to be bumped up a little bit, because 1,700 square foot is a little house. It's just a little house. I mean, that's not a big house in today's market at all. And without a basement, this is Wisconsin, and homes in Wisconsin generally, new builds have basements, that's just part of what, what we do here, and I think that you're going to miss that opportunity to be sure that those houses assess at $300,000 if you don't do something with those two points. I also don't like the point of selling a double lot.
Okay. That was the motion that was made, so we're just waiting on your vote.
My vote is no.
That motion passes seven to one. Thank you. Moving on to item S, a request to approve the proposed 2022 budget calendar presented by Steve Barks, City Administrator.
Thank you. This is likely to be a fairly quick item, it's every year we present to you the proposed budget calendar for the upcoming season. We have two separate calendars, one at staff level, which, believe it or not, even though the CIP is just winding down, we're going to be starting the staff budget work in June. So, I mean, it's like a continuous financial season for us, but the council's part of it doesn't start until the fall. So, what I want you to do is take a look at what I put in the agenda packet, and the focus really is those meeting dates that we set for the council to go through the budget process, starting in October. The first one will be Tuesday, October 12th, it will be at 5:00, and we would move back the regular meeting that night to 7:00. That would give us, you know, upwards of two hours to go through the budget discussion before having the regular meeting an hour later than normal at 7:00. The next one will be Monday, the 18th, at 6:00 PM or after the Board of Public Works. Thought about maybe Tuesday that week, but some of you, I assume, will probably want to go to the league conference. Hopefully, that's going to occur, we didn't have that last year with COVID, but I believe that's scheduled for the KI Center in Green Bay, the Wednesday through Friday of that week, the 20th through the 22nd. Third meeting would be Tuesday, the 26th, at 5:00 PM, again, in advance of the regular meeting, that would be moved back to 7:00. And then, if we need a fourth one, which hopefully we won't, we generally haven't, but we did last year with some of the struggles we were going through in the budget process, that will be Monday, November 1st, at 6:00 PM, or again, after the Board of Public Works meeting. The public hearing on the 2022 adoption, and hopefully, the, on the 2022 budget, and hopefully, adoption would be on Tuesday, November 23rd, as part of a regular meeting, and then that would allow us enough time to get out the tax bills in mid-November, as is generally the goal, so that we can move that process forward. So, unless there are any questions, I would look for approval of the proposed 2022 budget calendar.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Rosendich, and a second by Mr. Fisher. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. And that motion passes unanimously. Item T, discuss ongoing compensation plan implementation, presented by Steve Barks.
Thank you. Two weeks ago, Jen gave an excellent and very comprehensive presentation on the compensation plan that we have adopted in early 2018 after a study by McGrath of Northern Illinois. I was on vacation, I was actually driving back home from Twin Cities International Airport during that meeting, and I apologize for not being here. But our premise is, that that night she gave the overall compensation plan, the premise, the way it works, the heart of it, and how it's carried out, answered some questions from council along the way, and then we would come back in two weeks, after you had a chance to kind of adjust it more. Several members of this body were not part of the council at the time that this plan was discussed and adopted back in late 2017 and early 2018, so we want to make sure especially that those members could become familiar with how the plan works and have a full understanding of it. So, my goals for tonight are twofold, really. First is to redo, review the issues that were identified and maybe not fully resolved or addressed to your satisfaction from back on May 11th, and the second is to see if the council has any additional questions or concerns about the plan. You know, my hope in these two meetings is that when we're done, the council feels comfortable embracing the plan. If you don't, please tell me, and we can certainly raise any questions and go through what concerns you do have, but if we can walk away with an understanding and acceptance of the plan, sort of reaffirming what we did three years ago, that will put us in a good place to handle future pay scale adjustment discussions. Now, all of this, of course, is subject to financial constraints. We know in the last couple of years, we've been dealing with a lot, starting with the TIF transfers and the whole structural budget shortfall, and we've made some progress, thanks to this council in large part, and the decisions that you've made, and Ron Almond, and our financial advisor, Elders, being at the heart of that. But we still know that even if you embrace this plan, you know, again, so to speak, that it's always going to be subject to what available monies there are or pay scale adjustments. With that in mind, I just want to touch on a few things that were brought up at the meeting, I apologize if this seemed repetitive. I think, again, Jen answered some of these questions, but just to touch on what came up, see if there's any further questions from the body. One was the idea of implementing wages, wage increases on the employee's anniversary date. Tom Butke brought that up, and while there may be some merit to that, and maybe expedite the increase rather than waiting until July 1st, talking with the finance department and looking at it further, that just creates a real hornet's nest of issues for the actual pragmatic implementation. You know, you've got employees off through every one of the 365 days of the year, trying to coordinate that, to have everybody's pay increase occur on their anniversary date is not, I shouldn't say realistic, I'm not saying it can't be done, but it's got some problems to it, so we would not recommend that. Another concern that was raised was the treatment of redlined or red-circled employees, we have a couple of those who are at the top of the range, and again, just affirming that while that may not be ideal, the fact that somebody is at 117.5% or greater of their pay range, as determined by McGrath back in 2018, you know, that's, that's something that happens, and those individuals, over time, see their, their scale adjusted by the decisions you make, but it's part of the process that some people may be in that position where they're not going to get, you know, the increases as readily as others. The next item was the, and I think Rebecca Spiros brought this up, the lack of a path to upward mobility, the issue was cited about maybe somebody working in concrete in the street division, and whether or not they have a path forward to increased earnings and increased stature. And again, this may sound kind of heartless, I don't mean it that way, but the positions we have specked out, you know, are what they are, we'd like to see people move forward, some people have a desire to move into management, others don't, we'd like to create opportunities where we can for people to grow and progress in the jobs they do, and we'll continue to look for, for those, but it's not always possible, the reality is just there, and that's true in the private sector, too. Point number four, I think Jen did a good job of addressing, but I want to bring it up if anybody's got any questions, the idea that we get to market as soon as possible. I think Councilmember Wagner brought this up, and maybe others did as well, you know, from step one to step five. First of all, that sounds like five years, it's really four years, because if I started today on step one, I'm already at one, so I would get to step five in 2025, four years from now. I think ideally, it might seem more possible to get people to their midpoint at three years, to many of us, rather than four, but it seems like a reasonable scale. Now, we have started people above step one, Jen always looks at the background, the experience, the education that people bring to the table, and sometimes it's warranted to start somebody at step two or even step three, but you want to be careful about the idea of starting people high just to get them to midpoint, because you've got other people who've started at step one, and they may be leapfrogging over individuals that might make that kind of awkward, too. So, is it a good thing to look at bumping people up to a higher step if they really deserve it, and if that's the best way to compensate them when they begin? Yes, broadly speaking, you know, it's not the whole panacea, but I get the point of trying to get the people to midpoint at the earliest possible date, once they're doing what's considered to be, you know, a solid job for their position. I want to spend a little more time on the others, if I can, real quickly. Number five, one that I wanted to bring up is the compression issue, and that is, it was talked about quite a bit, there's been discussion since then, I know Councilmember Fisher, you brought this up with police and fire, especially, we want people to be incentivized to move into management positions. And right now, if you look at it, and you're a police officer or a firefighter, and you see you're making this close to the people above you in management, you're saying to yourself, "I want the headaches," you know, for that additional money, it doesn't seem like it's enough compensation to take on those duties. That's a tough job. I'm going to show you in a minute a schedule that I prepared of the wage adjustments for nonrepresented employees versus a CPI over the past three years. I was thinking about putting columns in there for police and fire union increases, I didn't in the end, but I will tell you that where you're going to see a single-digit increases for nonrepresented, you're going to see, if I had done it, you know, in the lower teens, for increases for the represented employees. I don't fault them for that, they're represented for a reason, they're getting pay increases commensurate with what other communities are paying, but it makes it challenging to keep up with this idea that we don't want this gap to get so small that we don't incentivize people to take leadership posts. So that is an issue, all I'm saying tonight is that an issue that we're going to have to keep working on and trying to come up with creative ways. I think Jen mentioned that even in the fire department, there's pay that you don't see. There's these other pays that are given for special duties, like first ambulance crew and these types of things, that add up and make that, that gap even smaller than you might see on the pay ranges. The other two I want to tackle, and I asked Adam, I don't know if you'll be able to hand those down, the sheets, that I did a couple sheets earlier today that I did email out, and I just want to touch on those real quickly. A question was raised on the comparable municipalities, who did we use? Who did McGrath use when they looked around? So if you look at the list that I put out, it's cities, villages, and counties that were included in McGrath's 2017 salary survey, there are 10 cities, including us, and we are kind of in the middle. There were four cities larger than us, and three, or five cities smaller, except for Wausau, which obviously is close to 40,000, that I know we use as a comparable a lot, you can say they're twice as big as us, are they really a true comparable? But we use them because they're an immediate neighbor. The others are all between 15,000 and 27,000, so we really fit nicely in the middle of that. They use the three counties of Marathon, Portage, and Wood, our county plus the two surrounding counties, and then they use some, some cities of various sizes, including ones like Eau Claire and Oshkosh, which might make you think, gosh, those cities are three times our size, but they were limiting their review to just certain areas, like fire, or like zoo and park employees, you know, places that have a zoo, those types of specific positions that they wanted to compare for certain reasons. So those are the ones that they used. You can always debate it. I know somebody mentioned Superior last time, are we really a comparable to Superior? Well, they're, you know, next to Duluth, they're a long ways from here, they're 27,000, but I think we've used them a couple times in comparisons for various things, including compensation, so you could always disagree on what some of the comparables are and the rationale. And then the last thing I wanted to follow up on was, Councilmember Whitzel brought up a really good question about, you know, how could we, if we wanted to, if we tried to make employees whole, so to speak, for the last couple of years when we haven't been able to do the pay adjustments? And that's the other sheet I gave you. It shows the last three years or so, what the amount we budgeted for nonrepresented pay increases, the amount that we've been able to pay, and then what the CPI has been during those years. If you look at 2018, that's a little bit misleading, I show that we budgeted 2%, were able to pay 2% on July 1 to nonrepresented, and the CPI was 1.9. Keep in mind, that was before we actually implemented the study that we signed on to with McGrath, so we're still using the Carlson-Dutman pay study, and we still weren't moving people past market, and that was the problem. So they got 2% compared to 1.9 CPI, but we weren't doing the steps beyond midpoint that we, I think, feel committed to making work, and have ever since 2018. But in the following three years, in 1920, and so far in 21, you see where we initially did well in 2019 compared to CPI, but last year, we budgeted 1%, didn't do it, CPI was about one and a half, and so far, we didn't budget 2021, and that's, that's on me, I didn't put it in the budget, that was based on the discussions we had about the 2020 increases with our structural budget deficit, but we've already seen an increase of 2%, actually 2.1% in CPI in the first four months of this year, and inflation looks like it's going to be a part of our lives for a little while to come here. So, we are drifting, we are losing pace, and I'd like the council to keep that in mind as we look at nonrepresented pay increases in the future. I heard a number of comments, even though I wasn't here that night, from people saying, "We came too far by doing this study to want to let it fall and be doing another study with a professional consultant in, you know, 2023, a full study." I know Jen has talked about sort of a, I forget the phrase, but sort of a modified update, but we don't want to be doing another full study in 2023, because we let this one fall short of full implementation. So those are the questions, the answers I see to the questions that I heard by watching the video that night. As I said, Jen, you know, handled some of them, at least partially, that evening. So my, my thought for the rest of the time, and I realize it's almost 9:00, an open session, which is kind of long, but if you have questions about these topics, do you have questions that you've thought about for the last two weeks, as you've kind of mulled over the pay plan, especially some of you who are newer, are refreshing yourselves with it? I really want to get a sense, again, I'm not looking for some- I really want to get a sense, again, I'm not looking for some big formal statement here, but that we're on board with this, subject to financial constraints. If we're not, if we think the plan is flawed for some reason, let's talk about it so that we know where we're going. If we know we're embracing it, then we can focus on what we can do for our staff, subject to the limitations we have with financial resources.
Well, I'm going to jump the line here because I'm the chairman. I just wanted to say that I, as a former employee of the city who worked under different compensation plans, probably three, maybe four different compensation plans, I feel that this one is by far the best that I've seen as far as providing a fair compensation for our employees throughout their careers, not just up to a certain level and then you're done. I think that where we fall short is when we start to stray from the compensation plan. And if we follow the plan, it takes a while to get to know all the ins and outs of it, but I think we're getting to that point. And I think if we follow the plan, that we will be, it'll be to the benefit of not only our employees, but to the city as well. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. Fisher.
Thank you, Council President. There's a few things, I guess, I want to say. One, I tend to agree with the Council President. I don't know if it's necessarily a good plan, but I think we have to let it run its course and get a better picture on the latter end to be able to really look back and go, okay, is this plan good? I think it would be detrimental to three, four, or five years in, scratch the plan. I just don't, I don't see the logic in that. So I agree with the Council President. I'm just going to reiterate some of the concerns that I have. And these are concerns, not even just at the city, but whenever you're dealing with wages, is equity? That's one. I want it to be an equitable process. Now, I talked with Jen, and that can be very complicated, and I understand that. But one thing I think we, as a city, we always have to look at is, are we being fair and is the process fair to all of our employees? The second thing is compression. I'm always concerned about this. I want to see people in the city grow in their positions. I would, I like the idea of promotions, homegrown employees moving up the chain. But it's concerning when I hear things about, well, why would I go into management when I can make more money not being in management? Like you said, Steve, why take on the stress when the gap is so small? And so that's always a concern, and I know Jen brought up both the fire department and police department. And I think those are things that we need to be looking at. I think as unions continue to get increases, we need to be looking at our management structure and going, are we giving equitable increases for them as well? To make sure that there is a healthy gap so that the compression is not becoming an issue. And I would like to see that, and this is just a request, I would like to see that maybe be something the Finance, Budget, and Personnel Committee look at a little bit more closely, is what, is there an issue? I mean, I'm hearing there might be, but I think it'd be good to have the committee take a deeper dive into that and maybe bring some recommendations. And I would just ask the committee chair, if you do put that on your agenda, I'd like to know about it because I would like to be present at that meeting. The other thing that I'm always concerned about is the wage adjustment. And I'm going to be honest, I must have missed it. And I didn't realize that in 2021, we did not budget the wage adjustment. I'm not saying, Steve, you didn't tell us that, I just don't remember that. And that's something that I am concerned about. And I think that's something we need to be looking at because now we will go two full years with a zero wage adjustment. And so I would like to recommend that the Finance, Budget, and Personnel Committee review the wage scale and bring back a recommendation to the council in four weeks to look at that so that we can decide whether or not we are going to stay with a 0% or if we are going to do something else.
Mr. Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I think I've seen a lot of, I've been involved in the creation and the oversight of a lot of wage plans. And this one, and I don't think any of them have ever been actually perfect. I don't think anybody, I don't think that any of them ever were looked upon by the staff as completely equitable and fine. But this one, I think I'd have to say is it's better than a poke in the eye with a sharp stick. It's okay. There, I would like to say that we could religiously follow that plan. But you know what happens, and it's going to happen again. We just approved, we just approved the meeting dates for the budget. And you know we're going to end up with a huge shortfall this year, you just know that. And basically, we on the council get this, they get to choose between people or things. You know, what are you going to cut out of the budget in order to give your people more money? Because there's only so much money, it's a finite number, and that's how you have to deal with it. As far, I want to address Mr. Fisher's comment about compression. One of the problems, one of the reasons we have compression is because we have bargaining units. And basically, when we, when, if we end up in arbitration, sometimes it's not our choice of where that number ends up. And what that, and the sad part is our management staff are all included in the wage scale, and those are done by comparables. So basically, we can, if we see compressions, we're more than likely to know that our comparables are seeing that same thing. The other thing that drives compression is the union types or the bargaining unit types can get overtime where our management staff can't. They can probably get compensatory time, but that doesn't, that doesn't put money in the bank. So that's something, yeah, we got to look at it. And it's something, and I think Jen's going to be bringing stuff back to us from time to time. And I think there's going to be some soon, probably before the budget. But anyway, I hope to see it before the Finance, Budget, and Personnel Committee, and we can address these things. And hopefully, we'll make the right choice between people and things when the time comes. Thank you.
Mrs. Spiros.
Steve, I just have one clarifying question based off something Adam said. I guess I didn't really realize that cut was, or that we didn't budget for the cost of living increase, but they did all get their step increases this year, correct?
Correct, yeah, that was really some of the discussion in the budget process, steps and the across-the-board wage scale adjustment. And ultimately, we kept the steps in for the employees. And you know, if I can add to that, and I apologize for the confusion. You know, I've been neglectful, certainly from time to time in my role as city administrator, by not pushing hard enough for our employees. And I'm just going to say that, you know, I always have to face the budget realities. I sit in a room with Ron and before him Keith Stye and look at the budget every year, especially the last couple. And it's exactly what Councilmember Wagner said. You know, you're looking at cutting projects, you're looking at cutting services. But in the midst of that, and I've said this before from this podium, we are a service business. You know, we don't make widgets, we don't sell products. Our business is the people who do a heck of a job in the city. They do amazing work in every department. And therefore, you know, for them, they realize that when times are hard, like they have been in the last couple of years, they're not going to see 5% and all these things. But they look at this and they say, it shouldn't all be on us. And I've sometimes fallen short of my role of defending that. So my intent is, as a follow-up to this conversation, to bring forward a request for an increase yet this year. So I thank you, Councilmember Fisher, for bringing that up yourself and sending it to Finance, Budget, and Personnel, because I think it's warranted, and I think we've gotten in a little better place. I think if Ron was standing next to me, he would remind me about the concerns we still have. We're not suddenly flush with cash. But we have made some good strides, and I think our employees deserve a look toward some additional compensation. And so that's kind of how it went down. Rebecca, I'm not sure if I answered your question, but I didn't push very hard because I knew the world we were in. But the ultimate decision was to keep the steps and not have an across-the-board scale increase.
If I might follow. No, I just wanted to be sure that we hadn't gone two years with zero raises for the employees because I don't want that coming out in the paper tomorrow, that these employees have had no raises in two years. They did receive their step increases, they did not receive cost of living increases. But I just wanted to make sure that that point was made, although I agree that we need to relook at this and look at this hard in the budget. And we need to make sure these people are staying compensated the way that they deserve to.
Well, thank you, and we certainly do respect your decision. And thank you for the decision to keep the step increases in 2021. That's important to keep people moving through the scale as they should. And we realize, and I'll be honest, we realize that the scale adjustments can be challenging from year to year, but they're important. We found out that in many positions, we're behind comparable cities, and that's a piece of the pie that needs to be kept front and center along the way, too.
Any further comments? Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Item U, adjourned to closed session under Wisconsin statutes, 19.85, paragraph one, paragraph E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons are involved, particularly the MCHS airspace lease and possible acquisition of property for a future city subdivision, and adjourned to closed session under Wisconsin statutes, chapter 19.85, paragraph one, paragraph G, conferring the, with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved specifically in employment claim against the city. We need a motion to go into closed session. I don't have that here.
Oh, you don't have it?
No.
It's motion by Fisher, second by Marshall.
Okay, you have a motion and a second, everyone vote.
Yes.
And we're in closed session. Five minutes.
Okay, we're looking for two motions. The first one is to...
To purchase the...
Certainly. We're looking for a motion to approve the offer to purchase on the Daniels addition with the contingencies as listed.
A motion by Mr. Fisher and a second by Mr. Rosendich. Is there any further discussion on that? Please vote. And Ms. Spiros.
Yes.
And that motion passes unanimously. And the second motion...
This one I may need help on. I have to approve the proposed price list and list of interested buyers of the lots in the city subdivision authorized the city administrator and council president to execute.
That sound right?
Yeah.
Okay. Any... We have a motion by Mr. Varsho and a second by Mr. Fire. And any discussion on that before we vote? Okay, please vote. And Ms. Spiros.
Yes.
And that passes unanimously as well. That brings us to suggested items for future agendas.
I got one.
Mr. Rosendich?
This is for Steve. If we're gonna go to Y, let's go to Z for agenda items in a meeting. Because you got the whole alphabet but you missed Z. So...
Sorry, Chris.
Jeez. Let's find some length here.
And I do have one thing that I don't know if that needs to come before the council or just a discussion between Steve and I is what happens if I happen not to be here?
Oh.
Because...
President on vacation.
Well, I'm not planning anything but...
You know, yeah, usually the council president fills in for the mayor. Does it call out in code that the board of public works or the finance budget and personnel chairperson? No? Maybe it doesn't.
Russ Boone said if the second in command is gone, then...
Okay. At that meeting?
Yeah.
At that meeting? Okay. Good enough.
I'll double check that.
Okay. Then we have a motion by Mr. Fire and a second by Mr. Fisher to adjourn. All in favor? Aye, we're adjourned.